Bonninsky.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak. Let the record reflect that Seagres is in attendance, Slavens. Anne Snyderman.
I am here.
Thank you. Can we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, we're going to have a little bit of change in the agenda today. So, we're going to update the agenda to include G17 on the agenda list. It was in the packet but was not on the agenda list. And a revised G15 is there and an update to G8. Can I have the support for that?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the agenda as amended. Additionally, moving the public hearing up above a public comment.
Yes, and the presentations.
And presentations.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, the first item on the agenda, well, let's start here. Can I have approval of minutes for November 28th, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Bonninsky. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we're going to start with a public hearing on the sidewalk repair program. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Sorry, we'll do this, we'll do that up here on the board, thanks. We're waiting for motion.
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs pursuant to the Township's Sidewalk Ordinance Sidewalk Repair Program policy and provided in Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989 at 6:34 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we're going to start with a presentation from Director Norwood on the sidewalk program.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. As you know, today is the date and time set for the the public hearing for our sidewalk repair program for 2024. As you probably know, that we are doing this a little earlier this year. And certainly Erica Hidalgo from Engineering will be talking, speaking to that a little bit. There are some reasons from a construction standpoint why we're doing this in December versus in March. So I'll turn it over to Erica Hidalgo, who will go through the presentation that's about this year's program. If you could pass it over to me, I'll go through the slideshow with her.
I think it should be okay. I think I've shared. Can you? There you go.
The sidewalk program for Canton Township, this is for the 2024 year for the Engineering Services holding our public hearing for the sidewalk program. We're working in Zone 8. The program was implemented in 1999 due to a trip and fall where they had deemed the responsibility that went through a Supreme Court in 1997 that the townships were responsible to maintain the sidewalks and the public right-of-way. Ordinances pertaining to the sidewalk can be located in our Chapter 62, Article 2, as shown on there on our website. You can find that information. The program, when we started it, began with the oldest sections or platted subdivisions in the township. Eventually, we consolidated it, consolidated the program by area. It took us 16 years to cover the first year. And currently, we are working in a 12-year program in the eighth year. Again, we're working in Zone 8. The subdivisions that we're working in are north of Cherry Hill, west of Hagerty, east of Morton Taylor, and south of Ford Road. The map shows you Zone 8, which will show you the locations of where we're at. Again, that map can be located on our website. There are different activities that we do every year with our sidewalk program. We do warranty work, which is a year after the work's been completed, that we re-inspect it for any defects that may occur. We work in the current construction year to prepare for the following year. And we also, which means we're marking and charting everything for an additional year. So, everything that was marked this year will be done in the spring. And then in the summer, we'll be marking things, getting ready for 2025. Again, the zones are shown on our website. Red denotes township responsibility. If you see a red dot on any sidewalks in the township. And green denotes the resident or owner's responsibility. The Board of Trustees, their, their goal is to complete these, any missing segments of sidewalk. We're actively working on completing these gaps. Any improvements that we can make when we're in a residential area targeted for sidewalk repair, we try to do that. A lot of it is to create accessibility for those with mobility challenges. Some examples that are shown on the screen there for what we mark for repair are displacements that are three-quarters of an inch or more. Anytime when the sidewalk spalls, and 50% or more of that surface makes it rough and hard for people to maneuver over it. Anything that has cracking, spider-cracking, sometimes we have concrete that's defective that will show that, especially when there's moisture in the ground. Sidewalk cracks that are more than three-quarters of an inch or one-quarter of an inch wide, more than two, two cracks in the sidewalk, or the entire length of the sidewalk slab. We look for ponding water, and we also look for any back pitch or forward pitch in the sidewalk due to the tree roots or some other issue. Anytime we look at the most obvious defects, we do put a level to them and we make sure that we're matching something that's compliant, that meets the American Disability Act. Some of the repairs that we mark are marked in red. They're due to utility repairs. The township owns and maintains the sanitary sewer and the water gate wells. Those have solid lids, and they are also marked in red, and you can see that in the pictures of what, some examples of what we mark for township responsibility. The other responsibility that the township has taken this as a courtesy, the storm sewers, we do not own or maintain. Those are maintained by Wayne County or your homeowners association. However, the township will cover sidewalk only. Any slabs that touch a storm sewer, they'll cover those two slabs or slab, and then any consecutive slabs, those are marked for the resident's responsibility. As far as sidewalk ramps, sidewalk ramps are marked, anything that's, needs to be brought into compliance, if there's slope issues, pitch issues, the township typically will mark those ramps in the subdivisions with our responsibility, with the exception if it's part of a homeowners association located adjacent to a common park area. The median or common park areas, if there's a area that's between, like a boulevard that goes into a subdivision, that sidewalk that passes through that median area is the responsibility of your homeowners association. Some of the things that we also look at are sidewalk approaches. It's important that the safe condition of your driveway is maintained by the homeowner. We try to do our best when we're repairing and marking sidewalk. If the, the drive approach is defective and the sidewalk passing through it is defective, we'll mark it, or if we know that there's going to be a big displacement between the sidewalk and the apron, the township will mark that. It's an additional expense by the homeowner. But if there's any concerns about that, the homeowner can call us and we'll work with them. Public notifications went out December 4th, so most people have gotten their estimate letters. The scheduled zone, we did the inspection in 2022. So they're getting those estimate letters now so that we can get ready for doing work when the construction season will allow us to in the spring. Typically, the ordinance is written that you have 60 days from, to do one of the following from the date of this necessity hearing. And that is to contact the township if you have a contractor lined up to do that. They need to pull the necessary permits with Canton Township and Wayne County if they're getting concrete work done. They should have those permits pulled in by May 1st, and have that work completed before the contractor reaches their area. As far as residents that don't contact us, we just assume that they're on board with the township doing this when we get to their location. But again, invoices are sent after we do the work, and if there's any questions, homeowners are welcome to call the Engineering Department, and I will meet with them and go over their markings. Again, Zone 8 will begin on May 1st. The miscellaneous will start after that. And we're expected to complete this work by the end of July, or end of summer, anyway. So, I don't know what else I can add to that, but...
Thank you, Erica. So this is the sidewalk hearing. Is there anyone in here that wants to ask questions about the sidewalks? Just to let you know, okay, what we'll do is, we can ask questions at the podium, but then afterwards, Erica and Charles Sirok, our engineers, will be out in the lobby and they can get your address and, and go further with this. So if you want to speak about the sidewalks, please come up to the podium. We'll come up, yeah. How many do we have? Four?
Just for the purposes of a sidewalk hearing as well, please state your, your name and I would prefer your, your address. And then, if you could summarize a statement of whether or not you support or do not support the need for the SAD.
Okay. My name is Sonia Do. I live in the Sunflower neighborhood. And earlier on this year, we came home one day with the big green markings all the way across our front yard. All slabs of the sidewalk have zero cracks, no crumbling. There's nothing wrong with them. There's nothing uplifting. It's ADA compliant, and no explanation of why it's like that. Our next-door neighbor said to contact Erica Hidalgo. We called multiple times, left messages, never got any responses. And so, then we get this letter, and it says 181 square feet of our sidewalk need to be replaced at a cost that's going to be almost $2,000. And it's very odd that there are several other, because we walk the neighborhood every day with the dog, crumbling parts, sidewalks that are clearly uplifted, no green circles on theirs, but yet we have several slabs. There's nothing wrong with them. I have pictures. So I don't understand. That's my question. So I guess I don't support it in my situation.
Okay, thank you. So Erica and Charles will be in the lobby, and Erica was the one who just spoke, and she can help you. Thank you.
My name is Majid Taj. Good evening, everybody. This question is not pertaining to the Zone 8. I don't know what zone I'm, I live in. But the question was, who does the sidewalk, the incomplete sidewalk, missing sidewalks? And I'm talking about east of Lot on Palmer Road. That was my first question. But before I wanted to ask this question, I wanted to make sure that we are up to code as far as the fire department is concerned, that we had more people than I think this room can handle. Just want to comment from the fire department. But the question was mainly for the sidewalk. I don't know what zone we belong to, but east of Lots and on Palmer Road, there's a sidewalk missing, and there's a school there, and there's a lot of pedestrians, little kids walking across. And I think there is a proposal or, or in the works for, for a traffic light there. And they have done some, some work, concrete work, and I think if that can be combined with adding the sidewalk, the homeowner, owner association has built a sidewalk probably about 20 feet away from the intersection. So that 20-feet area needs to be covered.
Okay, thank you. That's probably part of our gap program, but after we hear all the residents, we can say anything. But if you want to find out what zone you're in, Erica can help you with that, but, okay. Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name's Carl Zarbo, 42150 Fairview. I'm in Franklin Square Homeowners Association. I just wanted to give you some feedback on, on the program. We're, my subdivision is due for the second time around. We were one of the very early subdivisions in this program. And one of the questions I have, and I want to make sure I'm understanding it completely, that if you're looking to self-cure, you have 60 days from tonight. Is that correct the way I understand it? And it just seems, anybody that's worked with concrete ever, ever in their life, and I have to be misreading that, because no one's going to put poor concrete in Canton in February or March. So, I would just like to express concern about the timing of receiving this versus what you really face with is you're going to do the Canton program, because you're not going to bring a contractor in to do the work in February. So, if somewhere down the road, the program could be looked at so that it sequences with realistic Michigan construction timing, that would be greatly appreciated. The second thing is that we are the second time around, and it was, just happened that the inspector that was doing the marking, I was out doing my yard work the day he was doing it. And in our subdivision, the same two slabs that were reported have failed in virtually 90% of my subdivision. I know why they failed. I don't know if the township does. So what we're being, I don't mean forced, and if I do say forced, I don't mean that in any negative form, but we're being asked to replace what's been replaced. And I have a little bit of heartburn with that. As I approached the gentleman that was marking the slabs, I asked him if he could take just a couple of moments, look at the two slabs of my home again. I know why they failed. And I wanted him to look at just several each side of me. The problem is not unique. In fact, it's with most of the homes in the subdivision. So the work that was done, I don't know if it was 19 or 20 years ago, has all failed. The gentleman's answer was, "Concrete fails in 20 years." Well, again, we all know if you look at the township and you look across the township, that's just not the case. What failed in my 50-year-old home was the two that were replaced on the township program. So, what I had asked was that number one, he'd take a look at it. He wouldn't. Number two, I asked if it would be possible to bring that back to his supervisors so he could communicate that we believe we have a problem that positively could be corrected. He wanted no part of that. And then I guess what really got under my skin and why I'm here is that on top of what was, I don't want to use the word rude, but had no concern whatsoever, he was parked illegally right in front of a no parking sign in my subdivision. And when I group those together, and I look at the letter and the timing, it just tells me, I just would like someone to care. That's really what it's all about. I'm keenly aware of why the program was put in position. Keenly aware. I just think that the second time around, to be paying for work that was shoddy to begin with, is inappropriate. And the only reason I'm here is to ask that someone, it's probably too late for my subdivision, and I'll write the check. But I think there's a opportunity for quality control going forward, and I think there's an opportunity for timing that's in concert with construction seasons in Michigan, and that's really why I'm here. So I appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and you're actually, you are right. So we do, Mr. Zarbo, we do have, we do allow for weather in that. And Dave, if you want to just clarify the timing of that, even though it says 60 days?
Yes, so it, it's a timing issue with our contractor, so you will have more time. We're not going to pour in 60 days. So there will be more time. But... Hi. What you're telling us is we have 60 days. That's what the ordinance says. Yeah, that's what the, the ordinance says, 60 days, so.
No, we, we do allow for weather. We...
Looking at your information, I have to go with the township program. If I don't replace that sidewalk in midterm, in midterm, all due respect.
Thank you. Thank you.
All I respectfully requesting is that... Whatever that is, is not right. Just...
Yeah, actually, we did this, we usually do this in the spring, but the contractor has to pull it up ahead so he could start earlier in the year. So that's kind of, I think, what's throwing timing off with the ordinance also. But we'll take a look at that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My, my name's Kathy Bailey, and I live in the Carriage Hills subdivision. I've owned my house and lived there for 40 years, and I'm very happy with my neighborhood. But I did come home one day, and I live in a pie-shaped lot, and so 18 squares of my sidewalk, all of it were marked with the green dot. And when I looked at it, there's probably six that maybe need replacing. The rest, I cannot tell what's wrong. They're not cracked, they're not broken, there's no, nothing. Adjacent to that are some of my neighbors that, one, it looks like brand-new concrete. My apron of my driveway was also marked, it has no cracks, no, nothing wrong, again. So, I did come in and go to the office and ask, and asked it, "Please, someone come out and go over with me what could be the problem." I also expect to hire my own contractor, hoping I can do a bit better. And I need to have information to, to communicate to whoever contractor I hire. So I, that was really information I needed. I also placed phone call, and I, it's now December, and I haven't heard anything for months. I really don't understand why the, the driveway apron was to... So, in the letter here, it shows the cost that the city would be expecting me to pay, which is over $7,000. I'm a widow, and I'm on social security. That's totally impossible for me. Totally. So, and then, again, I understand a bit from the man before me, but my, I mean, I'm going to call and ask for requests from contractors to come and give estimates tomorrow, but, you know, they're going to probably look at me like, "It's winter." But yes, I do want to comply and bring in whatever information I have if I'm going to get that done. I just hope my request would be honored, that I would have an outside contractor, and not have the township come along and do it anyway. So, I thank you. I do enjoy living in Canton, and I want to see it kept up, but I have questions.
Thank you. So Erica and Charles are in the lobby, and you could schedule a time for them to come look at. But again, I think, as we pulled this hearing earlier, I think we're in conflict with the ordinance with 60 days. Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the sidewalk? Anyone else on the sidewalk? Okay, Erica's right here. Erica, do you have anything to say?
I just want to add a couple comments to some of the things that were brought up. When we go in subdivisions where you see your neighbors have problems with their sidewalk and we haven't marked them, those are usually in our miscellaneous areas. Those are specific to complaints or requests that we get through our office. So we're not in your neighborhood to look at everybody's where there's a defect that you may find. So, we're welcome, anybody that wants to report an address where there's a defect, we'll look at it and put it on our list. But if you notice, if you're in a subdivision where nobody else's is marked, that's why. You're in, you're in a miscellaneous location, and we're specific there because we received a complaint, or it was a request to be out at that location. The other thing was, a resident had brought up the quality of concrete control, quality control when we're going out there in a concrete failure. Concrete's only guaranteed for a year. Any contractor you have do the work, it's very unlikely that they're going to warranty an individual homeowner and come back and do the repair. The township is required to hold a retainage for the work that we do, so we're able to warranty that work for one year and go back and replace it. In regards to concrete, it can go bad. It's usually their additives, or it needs quality control. We follow the standard with the mixed designs, and we periodically test these concrete, concrete trucks that come in. Contractor's not aware of it. We spot-check them. I'm happy to provide those test results if anybody wants to see them, because we do do that to monitor the control of the concrete that's used. And then, as far as the sidewalk that a resident brought up with not seeing the problem with something that wasn't cracked or displaced, and we added additional dots where they saw nothing wrong with that, we have to follow the federal guidelines of the American Disability Act. That means that we can't exceed a 2% slope. So when we go to repair a defect, sometimes we have to go beyond the defect to match it to a flag that's compliant. So that's where the added flags come in. And then as far as the, the gap locations, as, as you know, the township's goal is to fill those, we are, we are actively looking at those and trying our best to complete those missing segments of gaps. Thank you.
How many miles of gaps do we have now? Isn't it 40 miles?
Yeah, 40 miles a gap.
So I do have some people online. I noticed, if you, if you want to be part of the sidewalk hearing, I see one hand up. I do not know if that, Deki Alexander, I will allow you to talk, and you can let me know if you're here for the sidewalk hearing. If not, then we'll have to have you speak later.
I believe she's speaking on the ceasefire resolution.
Okay. Okay, so that... Anyone else for sidewalks?
Hello, my name is Herb Schroeder. I live in Cherry Hill subdivision, off of Hagerty, by the elementary school over there. And we've lived there for 40 years. Not a problem. We love Canton. We just absolutely love it here. I mean, I built my own house. I mean, these two hands built my own house. So I live on a corner. In fact, all houses along Canton Center down here by the township are all copies of my house, which is a great honor, okay? My biggest thing is, I have sidewalks that, yes, have stepped things, and I am handicapped, okay? I understand that because I have to trim the lawn, which is, can be a pain, because I know I trip on them. Those I understand. I have no problem with those whatsoever. I had 18 of them marked on my corner lot, okay? I had a contract, contract company come out and fix eight of my slabs. I leveled them out because they weren't cracked. The guys told me, "You're absolutely right. They're fine. There's not a problem with them." Great, okay? Seven of them are still marked, which is a couple, I know, step levels, blah, 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 couple of water, the waters, table there, it has to be fixed by Canton Township, and that corner lot, yeah, goes to nowhere across the street, which, I understand that. And a couple of them I did replace with that goop you buy at Lowe's, the self-leveling cement, so that people wouldn't trip. I mean, I went out of my way to go spend hundreds of dollars for that goop to put in the sidewalk. Still not a problem. I understand that, okay? My biggest problem is I have, when I had people come out there, I won't mention names, to look at the sidewalks, they came with the levels and blah, 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 and they told me, "Well, this one's a quarter inch off. This is over here." I said, "Where's it off?" "Well, it drains towards the street." Who wants water to drain towards their house? I don't. And if the sidewalks are level and they're draining away from my house, that's what I want, okay? I don't want them to be level. I have neighbors in my subdivision that haven't gotten marked on the sidewalks, and you know what? There's puddles that grow there every, every winter time. And guess what? They fall in... They fall in a slip. I don't fall in my sidewalk, so we go out there, we shovel and we salt. But the water still drains towards the island. And as long as they're flat and not causing a problem, why do I need to replace those? I mean, this, me, is a bigger problem for a lot of people here, I understand that, but I've got a real problem. The four, five, or six that need to be replaced, I don't have a problem with at all, okay? It's 40 years old. I've lived for 40 years, okay? But my problem is, there's places, there's pounding, there's everything else like that, but my biggest real problem is here is that nobody fixes the streets. You pull in a Cherry Hill subdivision off of Hagerty Road and you got nothing but potholes right there. Wayne County came out and they fixed the sewers by my house. Guess what? They screwed up. They put the cement higher than my, by my island, by the side of my house on Meadowline right there. And guess what? The water sinks there every year. It's cracked. The water sits there, it freezes over. Guess what? Who falls? I do, my wife does, and everybody that goes by.
Would you like to have Erica and Charles come out to your house and they can?
I've already, I've had Erica over there twice. She doesn't do anything for me at all, okay? I'll be totally honest with you.
Erica, Erica's a very nice lady.
I don't care.
So we can have Charles, okay?
No, my biggest problem is, I asked Wayne County when he came out to fix the sidewalk, the street that one time, "Why can't you, well, that's up to Wayne, Kent Township come out and talk to Wayne County." Who's talking to Wayne County? Who's talking to Kent? Nobody talks to each other. I worked for General Motors for 30 years. Nobody talks to each other. They point fingers, okay? And that's what's happening here. You want to fix the sidewalks, but you don't want, nobody wants to fix the streets, okay? And that's a big issue with me, because my sidewalks get iced up, my neighbors get iced up, but nobody fixes those slabs. That's where people get hurt. I, like I say, I'm handicapped, I have, I actually have handicapped stickers in my car and on my license plates, okay? I slip and fall too. And if everybody was worried about the sidewalk getting iced up, then let's worry about fixing it. But like I say, my neighbor's house, they don't have any marks. You slip and fall. My sidewalks, yeah, they drain away from the house, but there's no ice there.
Okay, well, we can take another look.
I'm just, I'm venting, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we can take another look. And then, Mr. Norwood is the director and he can, he can take a look also.
I understand. I just want to voice my opinion. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, but I just need to make it a point, because I have sidewalks that don't need to be replaced. The ones I need to do, yes, I understand, okay? But everybody here, I can hear from the people, concrete, I've talked to people, I've been in business for years myself. And concrete, yes, I have poured my own concrete for years.
Okay.
And I know how six-bag mix, four-bag mix, and three-bag mix, people cheating, other people cheating with concrete, I know how that works, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And if you give your address, you know, we can make sure we take a look at it.
I just had to blow my steam, I'm very sorry. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. Anyone else for sidewalks? Nope. Can I have a, I don't see anyone, wait. Anyone for sidewalks online? I don't see anyone for sidewalks online. Third time sidewalks online, I don't see a hand. Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing for sidewalks?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing after hearing the comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs to the Township's sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989 at 7:05 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any comments on the board about the sidewalks? Kate?
Hi, yeah, just a request that we do make sure that we get the timing cleared up, because Erica did say, she said both the 60 days, but then also May 1st. And I'm thinking the 60 days was when we were doing our hearing in the spring, so I'm assuming that May 1st is the correct date, but just want to make sure that we get that exact date out to everyone, so they know.
We want to make sure we publicize it widely.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone, Michael?
I will just say, I'm glad to hear that the township, while we are required to notice individuals that there's a 60-day requirement, we'll be waiving that 60-day requirement. I understand that we accelerated our normal schedule to accommodate the vendor, primarily because we have so much concrete work going on in the township. We are, in fact, fixing some of those roads despite some of the feedback that we had heard earlier. Additionally, we'll be doing cart paths and then walking paths at Heritage Park, so the contractor will be extremely, extremely busy. I remember in 2018, when my neighborhood was up for the roulette game of sidewalk repair, that we did have to increase our association dues to pay for the common area increases, and then myself and all of our neighbors also got the green tag that we heard about tonight. It is never fun, but I will tell you, replacing your sidewalk is much cheaper than losing a civil lawsuit when an individual trips and falls, specifically because you do not meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, and the township is made aware of that. In that instance, both the individual and the township would both be civilly liable, so that would come out of all of our tax dollars to pay for that, and then it would also come out of the individual homeowner as well. So I'm a big fan of accessibility. I'm a big fan of making sure that the sidewalks are in good shape. I'm very appreciative of the engineering department. Erica has been a phenomenal asset, both in the education and of helping me understand what the standards are, and I believe engineering has been pretty receptive of working with individuals. So I hope everybody here, I heard some shocking numbers, so I hope that those individuals can work with engineering and an MSD and get a solution, because that is a sizable bill, and that is, that can be very scary. So I do appreciate all of that, but I, so again, I think definitely in favor of the sidewalk repair program, and we'll be voting, we'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Treasurer Slavens?
Just real quick, I do agree with the sidewalk repair program. It does help our citizens while they're using the sidewalks. The township does have a program too, because I know sometimes those bills are very large, where you can pay it off in five years. There is an interest put on it, but we divide it into five installments and put it on your winter tax. Another thing we do encourage residents, if they can do, once they get the invoice, is chip away at it, because you do have about a year to pay it. And whatever you cannot pay, we can put on the winter tax. But, you know, sometimes paying it in full is impossible, and so we do try and help our residents out with that.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for everybody who came up and spoke. Couple things. One is, I do ask Director Norwood that your team take a look, and if someone does want to do it on their, go on their own and do it, that we see if we can give them a little more time with it being an earlier start. Maybe do some of our projects first and, yeah. I will say, though, that the buying power of the whole township through the township government is much greater than an individual. So you may find that the prices are, end up being competitive. Unfortunately, I've replaced a driveway recently and I know how expensive concrete has gotten, so take a look at that. And as far as the gaps, there is a separate gap program, and as you can imagine, it's as expensive, as expensive as you've heard the numbers today. It's the same for filling the gaps. So every year, we're chipping away, getting the available money to fill the sidewalk gaps in our community. The one that was mentioned over on Palmer, east of Lots, is one that I know is on the list and has actually been discussed even recently. A lot of times, it has to do with who owns the property and what's going on with that. So we're always doing that. It's something that I've been working on for 11 years, and we have made great strides in filling our gaps. Sometimes a gap is there and the next day it's gone, and then you've forgotten about it. Similarly, I encourage you all to go on the website and take a look at the roads program for the last five years. Every year, we've been repairing roads at an accelerated rate over the previous 20 years, and we, I don't remember what the numbers are, but just in the last five years, we've repaired some number of dozens of miles of lane roads in Canton, both in subdivisions and on our surface roads. And it's thanks to you, because you passed that millage, and you can see exactly what's been done over the last five years.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? As was said, yes, we do have, I don't know, Dave, if you want to say anything else, or?
Nothing else to add.
Okay. As was said, we do have the sidewalk gap program, that's also online, and you can see where we have gaps. Our priorities to fill are, of course, schools. Schools are the number one, because as you said, children are there. So we do have the maps there and some of our plans, and we did get money from it. Representative Renji Purion, Senator Dana Polhankey helped us get us somebody for that, and we are chipping away at that. Okay, great. Can I have the third motion, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the attached resolution requiring replacement of sidewalks in the subdivisions and miscellaneous locations as indicated on the attached list and published in the DLN on December 4th, 2023.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, I'm just going to get some presentations going so that we can, because we have a large crowd here. So we have someone from Micro Market for Employees, for Employees, for our Wellness Center, Amanda Conuti.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda. I'm from Human Resources. The Wellness Committee this past year has been working on health initiatives for the Canton Township employees. We sent out a survey at the beginning of the year, asking employees for suggestions on how we can improve health and wellness within the township. Some of the suggestions that we heard were pre-main meal prep for employee payment, easy access to healthy food choices, put healthy choices out there, healthy food beverage strategies, and healthier vending machines, snacks, and drinks. Based on these responses, we began researching fresh food markets that we could set up in the lower level of the administration building for all employees to be able to access. We were looking for healthy options at a low cost for our employees. We met with Alex McNulty from, oh, I'm sorry, Alex McConaughey, McNulty is one of our police officers, from AVI Food Systems, and we were impressed with their product. We're excited to have Alex here tonight to share with the board more information on AVI Food Systems and what they can bring for Canton employees. Alex?
Thank you very much.
Sir? Where is our, sir, we just have, sorry, we just have, people can't hear if you wouldn't mind just keeping it down a little. Did you need a place to sit or something, sir? Sir, did you need a place to sit? Did you need a place, are you looking for a place to sit?
No, ma'am, no.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a two-minute speech.
Okay, yeah, we have public comment in a few minutes. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, trustees. I appreciate you giving me the time to be here. Directors, thank you as well. So I am Alex McConaughey with AVI Food Systems. We are a family-owned company based out of Warren, Ohio, which is just before you hit the Pennsylvania border. We are a debt-free company and the largest family-owned company on this side of the Mississippi. Food is what we do. There are two types of companies that you could call to take care of your food needs. There are vending companies that do food, that's what you have now, or you could call a food company that happens to do vending. We do everything from large-scale dining facilities at Ford and GM, all the way down to break rooms in the local mom-and-pop shop. So we are very happy to provide our healthy foods for you. Now, I did, I did bring a few presentations for you. We do believe in doing things a bit old-school, so I do a paper for you. And I can, I want to guide you just kind of through a few items that are part of our program to kind of meet the needs of what you're looking for. So to meet the needs of your government employee base here, for looking for the healthier selections, the first thing is what we want to do is set up what's called a micro-market. So instead of having the traditional vending machines where you have to go to each individual machine, you want your drink, you want your snack, you want your fresh food, instead, you just get to browse the market like a convenience store in your own break area, and it has a self-checkout. Now, first thing people are going to ask is, "What about theft?" Well, there will be cameras in place, and at work, you're 100% identifiable, so we've had very little issue with theft. It usually is a very good deterrent, and we have this at other municipal locations, and again, had very little issues as far as theft goes. Now, just to point out the layout of what we want to do, you can find that on page 17 of the proposal. That is utilizing the downstairs area where your vending is currently. It was kind of an interesting-shaped room, but we did meet that as best we could to give you a nice setup. It will have beverages, it'll have fresh food, it'll have snacks, including some gluten-free options. The fresh food options will include some vegetarian options even. We know how to hit that mark. We have three chefs that do nothing but R&amp;D. That's their job. How can we take this food and put it in a prepackaged setting? So you'll find that our food is top-notch. We bake our own buns, we slice our own meat and cheese. That's just how important our food is to us. Every food item that we make comes on a microwaveable, safe, recyclable plate, and comes with a recommended condiment packet. So you never have to worry about, "Oh, my ketchup or mustard is not here." Well, that's okay, because it comes with something recommended, and sometimes it's spicy brown mustard or sauerkraut, or just depending on what the chef felt best with that. We also have a line of salads that'll be available, some more decadent options, like you can have a waffle chicken sandwich or a parfait. During the colder months, we have white chicken chili or just classic chili. So a lot of different food options, and that entire food menu is on page 21 through 35, so you're welcome to browse that at your leisure. Now, meeting wellness, there are two things on page 40 and 42, just to point out real quick. Page 40 talks about our website that's at, completely at your disposal, where we can partner with you to promote wellness for your employees, and it's avi-nutrisource.com. It's got healthy tips for life, it's got recipes that you can download and hand out to your employees, but my favorite part is on page 42, and that's the Ask the Dietitian link. Any one of your employees, no cost to you or to them, can submit any question they want about anything we have, whether it be a particular item or a dietary preference, "What can I eat in here?" And within 48 hours, if it isn't already answered in our FAQ, they'll get an answer from our dietitian. Now, on top of that, all the numbers that matter most are going to be pages 53 and 54. This is the numbers everybody wants to know about. So what does the deal look like? So we are asking for a five-year commitment, that just helps us recoup the cost of the investment. The equipment is very expensive, and we do have what we call a 13% profit guarantee in place. Now, we have estimated what we believe might need to be your contribution for that. We do not believe that the market itself will be profitable enough on its own, just be given the spread-out nature of your facilities, as well as being a white-collar environment, sales are generally lower than blue-collar. But the estimate is actually not that bad and very easily surpassed. So we do expect that, based on our estimates, your contribution towards this program would be $483 a year, not a month, not a week, not a day, a year. So it's nearly not that bad, and if sales do better than we anticipate, it could completely disappear altogether. Now, as far as pricing goes, we believe we're being very competitive, just to call out the key items. Candy, we're going to be putting at $1.60, energy drink at $3.45, Gatorade at $2, pastry at $1.50, snacks at $1.15, 20-ounce soda and 20-ounce water at $2. That includes tax, there's no extra charge for using your card, and they'll be able to use any phone form payment as well, Apple Pay, Google Pay, Samsung Pay, all of those will work on our system as well. So that is my whole presentation. I brought a lot of food for you that I want you to try. I know you can't eat right now, but you're welcome to save this for your employees or take it home and try it, and it's our samples for you, just so you can know what you're getting into should you decide to move forward with this.
Thank you. We'll share with everybody. Does anyone have any questions on the board? Nope, so this is for our employees, sorry, go ahead. Yes. Sure, Diane?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I wanted to thank Amanda and John, they've been very diligent in looking, you know, our employees right now don't have anywhere to go other than outside of the admin building or a vending machine, which isn't too healthy. And so I appreciate all your hard work in bringing this. We needed something brought in for our, for all of our employees, so they have a healthy choice at their lunch or dinnertime, so thank you, and thanks for the presentation.
I just want to add that I think it's great that we're able to do this. One of the goals we started out with as a board three years ago when we came on was respect for our employees, and I think this shows great respect for the people who work here and do the business of our township. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So thanks for the information, Amanda and John, and thank you for helping. Thank you. Okay. Could our Leisure Services Advisory Committee just give a report out?
I'm just going to introduce Chris Falco. He is our Chair of our Leisure Services Advisory Committee, and going to give a brief update on the happenings with what the committee is working on currently, and I'll pull up a presentation for him.
Thank you, Greg. Let's start out, we have the slides up. There we go. Let's start out with our membership. We have got a diverse group that, some of which, some of whom have been with the committee for a long time. We also have some new members. They vary in age, they vary in ethnicity, and one thing they do all have is a passion for our Leisure Services facilities. Our Director is Greg Hornberger. Jessica, his administrative assistant, is our shepherd who keeps us on track. Trustee Borinski is our conduit to the board. We also have a tie to the Cultural Commission with Marotta Carter, and Jay Young is our senior tie, and Tom Newhart is our youth sports representative tie. Some history, we couldn't actually find the date that the Leisure Services Committee was formed. One of our members says he's been there more than 25 years. We know he's been there at least 20 years. So it's been a long service to Leisure Services, and I'll take you through in a couple of minutes what we do. But a little bit of history of what we've done is, we're all happy that CLS, Canton Leisure Services, was just re-accredited. And that's really important. It shows in the quality of service that we all get, and it's quite hard to obtain. So we should all be proud of that. Part of that accreditation is our committee. In the past, we've brought public input. We've used focus groups. We've used surveys as an input to the committee. We've had a lot of spirited discussions about priorities and projects. We participated in rewards and recognition for various groups that touch Leisure Services. And more recently, we've formed some subcommittee groups. We're kind of taking it in a little bit in new directions, which we think is going to maybe, hopefully, allow us to serve Leisure Services a little bit better. We're going to talk about those in a few minutes. Part of those changes, in 2023, we, Trustee Borinski kind of spurred us to take a look at our bylaws. They were fairly formal and cumbersome, and we didn't really feel that they were serving the committee any longer. So we took and we streamlined those. We still adhere to the required Roberts Rules of Order, but we have cut down on some of the formalities and the motions and whatnot. As a result, I think it's improved the meetings. We get, we had a lot of good dialogue, and as I said, a lot of good spirited discussion. As far as the new subcommittees that we formed, we're going to talk about those in a few minutes, but we, we felt that it was important to have two-way communication. In the, in the past, it's, it's been somewhat one-sided at times where we were getting, the committee members were getting a lot of good input from Leisure Services, but we didn't feel we were always giving all that we could to the committee. And, and so in forming these subcommittees, we are looking to establish two-way communications. And we're doing that by going directly to the department leaders and meeting with them twice a year, and then bringing back those discussions to our committee. We're going to go through some of the examples from the meeting, the meetings that we had this past summer. Another accomplishment in 2023 is the project prioritization tool. We had a lot of discussion about how could we better give input, and how could that input better align with the priorities of the community and the Board of Trustees. We're going to talk about that toward the end of the presentation. So what we came up with is some revisions to our purpose and responsibilities. The first sentence I'm just going to read because it is part of our governing documents. Canton Township Board of Trustees has identified Leisure Services as a priority for the Canton community. The Leisure Services Advisory Committee will act as a voice of the community and provide strategic planning guidance as an input to Leisure Services staff and the Board of Trustees. Two-way part of this is we also want to act as a conduit to the community. We want to get input from the community, but we also want to communicate to the community good things that are happening. For example, yesterday, I was at the summit, and there were a couple gentlemen talking, and they had a few misconceptions about what was going on with the Aquatic Center. So it's a good opportunity to introduce myself and also to clear up those misconceptions. And we're looking for all of our committee members to do similar things. Far as the responsibilities that we've defined, we are looking for active, engaged members. So, you know, sometimes people will sign up, and then it's not what they were looking for. We will reach out to them a couple of times, but if they're clearly not interested, then we look for an engaged replacement. We've just had really good success. We just had our annual recommitment that occurred in December, and I believe all members except for one recommitted, which was a good thing. The second tick, I'm going to add one word. We provide input, not strategic direction, but we provide input to the strategic direction and the future of Leisure Services. Our committee is here to serve Leisure Services. It's here to serve the board. It's not to make decisions. Through our subcommittees, we are touching on budgets, programs, facilities, and how they align with the master plan and the goals of the trustees. And as I mentioned earlier, we are serving as ambassadors to our community and promoting Canton Leisure Services activities and communicating with people, again, trying to clear up misconceptions. In that process, we solicit feedback, and we bring that back to our committee meetings. So on to the subcommittees. There we are. We had a lot of discussion about the granularity of the subcommittees. We ended up with four. One was representing our sports activities. The next, our parks. Third, the summit. And last, our golfing activities. And you can see the members that are there. So what follows is going to be the results of our summer meetings. So, you know, part of the two-way street is the members that went to that meeting learned about probably more than maybe they already were aware of the involvement of our sports with our local leagues, tournaments, and youth. Also, the partnerships that our sports area draws on in order to make all of that a success. They also stated that they're using Kaizen to cast a wider net for individuals. Communication is always something that we stress. And in that regard, the committee suggested more signage along Michigan Avenue to attract drivers and passersby. The summit meeting, there was a lot of discussion around the upcoming Aquatic Center, and we have a success there. It's going to be a phased reopening over the next several weeks, and we have a grand reopening ceremony on January 5th. We also talked about the recovery from the labor shortages that developed and the progress that's being made there. We talked about, again, communication, signage that's being added, QR codes that are being, so people can scan and go to a website and get some information. We talked about the pollinator gardens, and that our committee, we, you know, are more than willing to help and give some guidance on the pollinator gardens and where they would be located. And we also talked about soliciting more information from our community through surveys, and again, through various feedback mechanisms. I've pretty much gone through the summit slide here, so let's bump on from that. Okay, the last was the golfing. Again, the golfing has really been a success story, mainly driven by the pandemic. It got a lot of people interested in being outdoors and using our two great golf courses and facilities. Due to the growth that we've had, it's at capacity at this time. There has been substantial growth in women's league and youth leagues. And, you know, as always, there's areas for maintenance and improvement, but golf is pretty much humming along. Okay, lastly is the prioritization tool. This, we had a lot of spirited discussion around what this was to be. Kate's got a smile on her face. And the one thing that we were all pretty steadfast on was that it needed to be aligned with the township goals and the trustees' goals. So what you see on the left side of the page are those goals. And what we wanted to rate, we wanted to score subsets of that as it touches Leisure Services. And we gave them a weighting so that it would help, you know, it would help illustrate priorities that were needed. On the right side of the page is input from Leisure Services. So how much is this going to cost? How difficult is for it to implement? And if you go to the next slide, the output is a nice graph that Jesse came up with for us that really gives you a good visual of what projects pop. And so the goal is for Leisure Services to fly with this thing. We completed our work, I think it was late spring, and hopefully it will be of some use to you all. Our upcoming schedule, we meet every other month, and we have subcommittee meetings planned for the spring and for the autumn. And with that, I thank you.
Any questions from the board? Kate, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chris for his leadership on the, on the committee. He has, he came in early this year, I think, and kind of revitalized our committee and had some, some really good ideas. So thank you, Chris, for that. And also thank you to all the members of our committee who, you know, have such a passion for, for our community.
Anyone else?
I will just add thank you to Chris and to Board Rep Kate Borninsky, as well as the Leisure Services Committee. I think Leisure Services is kind of the crown jewel of our community, and it's something that residents and folks love to come to Canton and participate in. And so thank you for your time in making sure that it works for all of our residents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tanya?
Yeah, I just wanted to concur. It's summer. Thank you so much, Chris, for the presentation. I think the prioritization tool will come in handy for us, but the Leisure Services has always been working with the community to find out new programs that match the community needs. So thank you so much, and thank you, Kate, for your leadership.
Anyone else? So thank you. Just let me know, you said some of the projects, obviously we're expanding parks and expanding accessibility, but what were some of the projects that popped? You said some of them popped at the top.
Greg would have to answer that one.
Those were really just example ones as we were learning to utilize the tool. We haven't put through, we haven't gone through a cycle of actually recommending current projects. We were evaluating some past ones that we knew that were going on, and just making sure the tool gave us the outputs that we needed.
Great, thank you. Good job. Good job, team. Thank you.
2024.
2024.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Last presentation, we have our youth. I don't know if they're in the room or if they're in the hallway. Youth Advisory Council? Are you there? Advisory Council's going to give us a report out? Just two today? Okay. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you? Okay, my name is Shriya, and I'm the President of the Youth Advisory Council.
My name is Alia. I'm Treasurer of Youth Advisory Council.
And today, we're here to talk about one of our initiatives called the Youth Deeds Assessment, and we've been working on this since the spring, and we're coming to a closure in like two weeks. And we got enough responses to like know like what the youth wants around Canton. And we did bring extra flyers for you guys to distribute, or we'll like place them in the back of the room where you guys can look at it.
We're also expanding our volunteer presence with our new service hour requirement, 15 hours per board member. We also regularly volunteer at teen nights out at the block and here to support the agency. Ask the board to keep us in mind when there's a need for volunteers.
And then lastly, we have our DEI initiative, where the block students were able to learn about the Canadian Thanksgiving, Diwali, and Hanukkah. And they were able to do activities such as like drawing hand-pinked turkeys, do like a fun like candle like light, and then like learn about like a scavenger hunt about Hanukkah. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you for your hard work, and I know that you're trying to get more involved in what we're doing up here, so that we're working on that with Amy. So we will be seeing you soon for that, but thank you for the plan that you looked at. Thank you. All right. Well, we have a lot of people in the room. I tried to get out as many that were here for other things as possible. But what we're going to do is, we do have Commissioner Melissa Dobbs. I don't know if she's here still. Oh, there you are. So there are a lot of people here for the same thing. So our public comment is just that. It's a public comment. It's a time where we listen to you. We don't go back and forth. We just listen to what you say. And there's three minutes per person. If you hear a lot of what you already want to say, you don't need to repeat it because we, we understand the support in the room. So just to let you know that. So it doesn't, you don't need to all speak if you don't want to, but if we will give three minutes, we'll have Commissioner Dobbs start it off, and then I'll start the timer as we go on. But if you could, if you want to line up, or if you don't, if you want to just raise your hands, that might be okay too, because I'm worried about everybody lining up over there. Okay, Commissioner Dobbs.
Evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Dobbs. I'm the Wayne County Commissioner for Canton Township. And before I speak on this resolution, I just want to take a moment of privilege to address the comments about the roads in Wayne County. I, I do know that Wayne County Department of Public Services and Canton Township work very closely together on a regular basis to make sure that our roads are getting repaired. If you have any specific questions, you can always contact Wayne County DPS directly at 1-888-Road Crew. The information is all online at WayneCounty.com, or you can contact my office, and we'll help you get, you know, to the right direction. My contact information is all online as well. Just Google my name, and it's on there. It's on the Wayne County Commission website. So with that said, I have some remarks prepared regarding the resolution on the agenda. I'm here to urge the Canton Township Board to pass the resolution calling for an end to the conflict in Gaza. Tomorrow, in the Wayne County Commission's Committee on Government Operations, which I chair, we will be considering and hopefully passing a resolution urging the prompt release of all hostages, the end to any arbitrary detentions, and the humane treatment in compliance with international law. with international law of the Israeli and Palestinian people. Our resolution also urges the Biden administration, its representatives to the United Nations, and members of Congress to support a ceasefire and allow for unimpeded, unimpeded expansion of humanitarian aid throughout the region and the continuation of peace talk negotiations. Resolutions like these passed at the local level are so important. President Biden, our members of Congress, and our state legislators need to know that our community wants an immediate ceasefire and an end to these atrocities. I would like to thank everyone who has contacted any of their elected officials about this issue, and to all of you who have shown up tonight and stood and waited for an hour to hear these comments and to hear if this resolution is going to pass. And to everyone who continues to pay attention to this and bear witness to the tragedies that are happening to innocent civilians, including children and babies. It is really the least we can do to those who are suffering.
Thank you. So I just want to remind everybody who's coming up that, please, I'm trying to speak into the microphone. I know, I think we're having a hard time hearing, so if you could pull it towards you, that would help also. Okay, thank you. You might have to press down on the button. You don't have to on that. Could you mind speaking?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Okay, good. Okay. So three minutes. Please introduce yourself and start.
Good evening. My name is Rabah Ode, and I'm a proud first-generation Palestinian-American and resident of Canton. While I'm grateful to our city for taking the initiative to propose a ceasefire resolution, I cannot in good conscience fully support this resolution. This resolution in its current form is framed in a way that serves to perpetuate a false narrative and blur the lines between the victims and the aggressors. For instance, let's start with the title, "Resolution Calling for an End to the Conflict in Gaza and Israel." The term "conflict" itself implies a balanced exchange of force. To be clear, there is nothing balanced about this. We are witnessing a genocide being committed by an occupying force on the people they occupy. It is not a conflict, it's a genocide. The resolution in its current form implies that all, it all began on October the 7th. As I stand here addressing a room full of intelligent and educated individuals, I am confident that every single one of you are well aware of the history of the region and know that this all began long before October 7th, seventy-five years ago, to be precise. But just so we're all on the same page, let me briefly remind everyone. Over the past seventy-five years, the Palestinian people have experienced immense suffering, displacement, and a seventeen-year-long inhumane siege and blockade in Gaza, which several human rights organizations have described as an open-air prison. A blockade which has deprived Palestinians in Gaza of basic human needs, restricting access to food, clean water, electricity, and medicine. Over the last two months, we have witnessed a siege at its worst. In fact, just yesterday, a friend of mine and a member of our Canton community learned that her sister in Gaza died from a treatable medical condition due to lack of access to medicine and medical care. It was an unnecessary and untimely death of a young woman with close ties to our community, which we had the power to prevent but actively chose to ignore. Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, Beethleem, and many other human rights organizations have all unequivocally declared Israel an apartheid state, and the United Nations has repeatedly deemed Israel's aggressions in Gaza and the occupied West Bank illegal under international law. The Palestinian people have endured decades of displacement, dispossession, dehumanization, and annexation under the illegal Israeli occupation and apartheid system. And their humanity should be recognized and respected for what they've endured and the horrific genocide and ethnic cleansing they are experiencing as we speak. To say that we so badly want a permanent ceasefire would be an understatement. We need the ceasefire resolution to pass. It is a moral imperative, but not at the expense of denying the Palestinians the decency of acknowledging the terror they have endured over the past seven decades. To do so would dishonor my Palestinian grandparents who lived through the Nakba, the catastrophe, where seven hundred and fifty thousand Palestinians were expelled from their homes. It would dishonor my parents, who grew up witnessing the theft of their homeland piece by piece, and who, to this day, live under occupation and apartheid in the Palestinian West Bank. It would dishonor the hundreds of Palestinian prisoners, who should more appropriately be referred to as hostages, many of whom are women and children and are being detained under dire conditions without charge.
Thank you, thank you.
And it would dishonor our martyrs, twenty thousand of who were killed by indiscriminate Israeli bombings in the last sixty-six days alone. Women, men, children, healthcare workers, and providers, and the premature babies who the Israeli occupying forces left to rot in hospitals alone.
Thank you, Ms. I'm sorry, I know we have a lot of people, and I'm sure. Thank you very much. Yes, it's three minutes. If you guys didn't hear me, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Islam Dia, and I represent the city of Canton, my homeland of Lebanon, and the Palestinian people. So this is not the first time we've seen a divide in our country, be it politically or otherwise. However, this is not a matter of politics. This is about humanity, and I can't believe I have to come here tonight and tell people that a genocide is wrong, killing people is wrong. When the world said never again, we meant never again for anyone, and I'm here today asking our beautiful town to be on the right side of history. Bombardment we've seen of Gaza is beyond horrific and unacceptable. Families have been suffering death and destruction with bombs falling over their heads, no food or access to clean water or medical care, fuel or electricity. And if a bomb hasn't killed them, eventually they'll be dying of thirst, hunger, and disease. At least twenty thousand people have died already. How many is enough? Unfortunately, this is nothing new to the Palestinians, contrary to what people want to tell themselves. Again, this is, did not start on October 7th, but since that date, we have been demanded to condemn Hamas. Some of you have responded to my emails supporting a ceasefire, and I appreciate that. But for those of you who haven't responded to me yet, I'm here to ask you if you condemn the 1948 Nakba, or Sabra and Shatila 1982, or Al-Aqsa attacks, or kidnapping children, murdering journalists attacking Gaza in 2008, 2012, 2014, 2018. Do you condemn the Sheikh Jarrah attacks in 2021? Do you condemn attacks on hospitals, schools, and refugee camps? What about the killing of Palestinians in the West Bank where Hamas doesn't even exist? Or the thousands of Palestinian hostages held by Israel, majority of whom have never been charged with a crime, many of whom children? Do you condemn genocide? If you do, I demand that you condemn what Israel is doing and vote for a ceasefire. Under international law, killing civilians is a war crime. This matter is black and white, there is no gray area. This is a war on Gaza's civilians. Surgeries are performed without anesthesia, including amputations and C-sections. Babies were found decomposing in beds because Israel forced staff to evacuate the hospitals. By the time I'm done reading this, Israel would have, would have killed another child. The continuation of this ethnic cleansing is impacting our communities here as well. In the recent weeks, we have seen an increase of violence, Islamophobia, antisemitism, and Arab hate. I'm deeply concerned that this will continue to spread here in Canton. People, regardless of their religious views, ethnicity, or political beliefs, are rightfully concerned for the safety of their families or their loved ones. Everyone deserves to feel safe and respected, especially in the community in which they live. The only way to stop this is to stop the violence. And again, I urge you to vote for a ceasefire.
Thank you. Okay, three minutes. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Hafsa Aleem, and I'm a youth that has lived here in Canton for most of my entire life. And I'm here to urge that the city of Canton joins countless others in demanding a ceasefire in Gaza. Over twenty thousand innocent civilians have been murdered by Israeli militant forces. A majority of these victims have been both women and children, with almost ten thousand children killed since October 7th. The number of these deaths barely manages to communicate the disaster in Gaza. Twenty-five thousand children are orphaned, fifty thousand civilians are injured, and all seven hundred thousand living in Gaza are either without food, water, electricity, shelter, or proper medical care. I also want to emphasize that this is not an antisemitic issue, this is not a terrorism issue, this is a purely humanitarian issue. The United States was the singular veto on the ceasefire revolution held in the United Nations this past week. This means that it is our responsibility to put pressure on our government and representatives to push what our community members truly value, which is the right to live. Our very own governor has attended rallies in support of Israel's war on Palestine, neglecting the sizable portions of both Muslim and Arab people in her constituency. As a country that has had a cruel history of denying various communities of their human rights, the United States continues to support this legacy of racism through its support for Israel. The very nation of Israel has mocked the humanity of Palestinians, participates in the chemical poisoning of children, and repeatedly bombs hospitals and schools. Right now, this country is misrepresenting us, and it is necessary that we, even from the municipal level, express that we will not stand for the genocidal killings in Gaza. With the growing Muslim and Arab population, the people in this city are directly impacted by this genocide. Our communities have been in mourning these past two months, and the city of, the city of Canton has a duty to both support our causes as well as amplify our voices. Thank you.
Sir, thanks. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Gerald Dodson, American hero, Korea and Vietnam. I'm a retired senior financial advisor to the Secretary of Defense. I was advisor to the Bush administration on finance, and I was advisor to the Obama administration on finance. I want to stand up here and have everybody hear my voice. I command the police force of Canton. These brave young men and women are protecting us from the chaos going all around us. These are professionals. They care about us. They want to speak to us for us. They want to help us. And we should support our police when this community is peaceful. I see all these beautiful American citizens standing up. We need the police, and we need them to be financially compensated. I can help you with that. I saved the Department of Defense $100 billion in one year by using the theory of abandonment. I could go in your budget and get a few billion dollars to pay the police what they deserve. We've got to support the police. So come on, people. Support our police.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and go ahead.
My name is Rimes Maed. I'm from Canton, and I'm going to start with the words of a Palestinian student named Laram Hamad, who spoke at our own city council meeting and rally, and say this. Will you find your conscience, and will you find it urgently? In sixty-seven days, twenty-three thousand people have been killed, of them nine thousand children, forty-six hundred women, twenty-one thousand civilians, all with our tax dollars. Almost two billion have been displaced, one hundred and fifty-eight press quarters have been damaged, along with two hundred seventy-one schools, seventy, sixty-two thousand buildings, one hundred and thirty-one health facilities, four hundred and sixty health staff, and eighty-six journalists have been targeted, not to mention their dead families or the snipers taking them out. UN and humanitarian staff have been targeted, legal white phosphorus bombs have been dropped, entire neighborhoods carpet bombed for weeks, families trapped to this day under the rubble, all with our tax money. When will you say enough is enough? When will these people stop being collateral damage in your eyes and become humans that have lives, whose value is just as important as yours? Waalid Dahdouh, Mu'min Ashrafih, Anna Sashrefi are three journalists who were reporting live when their families were targeted by attacks that collapsed their entire homes on them. They reported the deaths of their own families. Waalid Dahdouh's family was in an area the Israeli occupation deemed safe. Mu'min Ashrafih has yet to pull any of his twenty family members out from beneath the rubble of their house. Ma'az Azayza, Bisan, Salah Al-Farajoui, and other journalists in Gaza my age have taken to social media to post their eulogies because they no longer have hope of living through this. My age, and I'm only twenty-three. Through watching these journalists, which I encourage you to if you haven't already, I've lost a piece of myself. I watched a mother lose a baby, she took five hundred and eighty fertility shots to conceive. I watched babies comfort each other over the death of their families. I watched a dad's panic over his autistic son who ran from the blasts and got lost. I lost the hope I had in humanity. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere." We're seeing that now. Palestine is facing a catastrophic public health crisis, there's no access to clean water, food, hygiene products, medicine, even a safe place to sleep, and this is only a small fraction of the horrors happening. So where is your line? How many more people need to die? People are executed on safe routes trying to leave. Is that enough? Exhaustion and starvation are now killing people. Is that enough? Cholera's spreading. Is that enough? Do you see what this has turned into? Do you see how far the line has been pushed? I'm giving you statistics and stories and names just to get you to care about people dying. Arabs and Muslims are being painted as violent and non-human to excuse the genocide happening in Palestine and silence us in the West. Three kids in Vermont were shot for wearing this very scarf. One of them is now paralyzed. His parents sent him to the States and out of Gaza for a safer future, but Palestinians can't escape the violence anywhere. I have a Palestinian neighbor across the street and another one two doors down. Represent us, stand up for us. Their lives are not any less valuable than yours. Their families are just as important as yours. I urge you to step out of your comfort of ignorance and find your humanity, and I urge you to do it now. Every moment that you let pass without calling for a ceasefire and end to occupation, you play a part in this. The violence of the occupation isn't new, it's been happening for over seventy years. Call for a ceasefire and an end to the, to the occupation now. Begging you to do this is human, is dehumanizing enough as it is. Canton will not stand for this genocide, and I hope you can see and represent that.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sung Jin. I have been a member of this community for twenty years. I'm an active member of my community. I'm a professional musician. I attended Plymouth Canton Educational Park. I now teach marching band and percussion at Redford Thurston High School. I'm here today because the language used in the current proposed resolution does not acknowledge the seventy-five years of brutal occupation and killing that led up to October 7th. The Palestinian people, the Palestinian people have endured and survived generations upon generations of brutal oppression, dehumanization, attempted cultural erasure, and apartheid, penetrated, perpetuated by the fascist government. The violence did not begin on October 7th, and opening the resolution as such is indubitably negligent of the truth. I'm here today to, that was all I have written, and I'm not accustomed to using my voice this way, but I urge us to relook at the way that we use our words in this resolution. Words deeply, deeply matter. I encourage you to take a look at the City of Ypsilanti's resolution, because we, we based ours on Detroit. I think not only should we take a, take a look at Ypsilanti's, but we should blaze the trail for how towns in metro Detroit can represent the Arab-American community and the Palestinian community.
Thank you. Next, please introduce yourself and go ahead. Three minutes.
Hi, my name is Maryam Fawaz, and given all the information given, we are very well aware, well aware of the current genocide taking place in the Middle East. While some may see it as controversial, it's very plain and simple. This was never about Hamas, and the genocide to the Palestinians did not begin on October 7th. It's been going on for over seventy-five years. They're not killing members of Hamas, they're killing civilians, and they're killing children. Israel has not only been bombing Gaza, they have been consistently bombing with white phosphorus chemicals in the West Bank, South Lebanon, Syria, and Ayodoc. They're looking at attempting a world war. I ask you today, not as an Arab, not as a Muslim, but as a human, for a ceasefire for humanity. And I understand some may be in denial of what is happening because the media tells them otherwise, but in this day and age, we're thankful enough to be able to see through the eyes of the Palestinians what's really going on with pictures and videos they've been able to share through social media with the horrifying effects Israel's had. Israel has currently been targeting the press and their families who have reported on this. They have put a ban on press altogether in Gaza. Think about that. Let that sink in. They've been bombing schools, mosques, churches, hospitals, centers for the disabled. I could go on. However, I know my time is limited, and so I'll sit here and I'll ask you all today, human to human, when it comes to, I'm sorry, when it comes to vote on the resolution before you, please vote for humanity. This is no different than any genocide that has taken place in the past, the, to the Native Americans, the Holocaust, and so on. So when you sit here and you vote today, please vote for humanity and think of which side of history you would like to be on.
Hello, please state your name and go ahead.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and my respected community members. My name is Salima Nawab. I moved to Michigan in 2016, and I've been living in Canton for the last five years with my husband and four children, and we've been very happy here. I want to thank the many community members and leaders from the Muslim community that have paved the relationships that, here in Canton, over the years, so that we are here today to discuss and pass a ceasefire resolution and to end this, to call for the end of the violence in Gaza. That was initiated by the board, that reflects the humanitarian thing to do. I want to thank the board for recognizing and knowing your community and how painful these past two months have been. I want to see this resolution passed today because although it is symbolic, it is significant for a suburban township to weigh in on a conflict that is outside of its jurisdiction and call for a ceasefire. My hope is that other cities in our state, in our district, across the country are going to follow suit and put pressure on our elected officials which are not representing the citizens of the United States, and stand up for humanity and call for an end to this killing in these dark and disturbing days. However, I do want to mention- However, I do want to mention that my initial look at this resolution was extremely frustrating and disappointing because I know that this conflict did not start on October 7th. I know that it has been going on for 75 years. I grew up in Little Palestine, which is Bridgeview, Illinois, and I've seen my community protest and stand up, have their own community members suffer for speaking the truth. So I know that this has not been going on for 75 years. I'm not Palestinian. I'm from Pakistan initially, but I'm born and raised in Chicago. And when I read the resolution and I saw that it started with a false statement, I was very frustrated. But thankfully, a friend of mine, a Palestinian who has family in Gaza, explained to me key points. She affirmed me, reaffirmed that yes, this language is extremely problematic for our history, for our future, for the past. But the people of Gaza need relief and they need this indiscriminate attack to stop now. She told me, Salima, how can I tell my family? I'm sorry, Canton didn't pass a ceasefire resolution because of the language. We are talking about life and death. We are talking about more trauma or some relief. Furthermore, she helped me understand your perspective. If someone has never had the opportunity to learn the history of this occupation, the history of the illegal settlements, the history of the violence, to get to know, maybe even to go visit Palestine and see what happens across the border, it is night and day. I can understand, if I put myself in your shoes as that person, that yes, my goodness, 17,000 people are about to, have been killed? This is beyond logic. This needs to stop. So I truly appreciate your effort. And I acknowledge that we do have to do better, and I have to do better, to educate my community, Canton, my board, help facilitate those conversations so we can learn what is, has been happening and make more legislature that will actually address the history.
Thank you. Thank you. Please state your name and go ahead. Three minutes.
Salaam alaikum. Hello, my name is Salil Adwicke. And I'm here to agree on passing the resolution for the ceasefire, but I'm also here to share my personal story. I am from Gaza originally. I was born and raised here in Michigan. But I'm here to talk about how this genocide has started from 1948 when we were displaced, when my family was displaced. We are from Hammamah and Batana, cities you wouldn't know because they were ethnically cleansed by Israel. They were ethnically cleansed. My family was displaced from their homes. And instead of fleeing to other countries, we fled to Gaza thinking we were going to get back soon once the chaos was over, but that didn't happen. We have been in Gaza for three generations now. And I had visited Gaza for, I went six years ago for a two-week vacation and I got stuck there for two years because of the border control. It is an open-air prison. I have an uncle that died on October 11th this year doing his paramedic duty, Hatim Awad. He was shot by his sniper through the back, through the heart, and then his ambulance was bombed trying to save civilians like himself. He has not, he didn't see his family since the start of the war and he was constantly working. All my aunts are nurses. They're all working in the hospitals day and night as these hospitals are being bombed. I have an uncle, I have an aunt staying in a school shelter and she is literally complaining. She's in the Jabalya camp and she is not able to contain her frustration as they usually do. I have 28, 128 directly family members there and I'm hoping and praying every single night that they are alive. This is a life or death issue. We cannot be silenced. This resolution needs to pass. We need to call for a ceasefire and we need to demand it now. We need to demand it now. Thank you.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sandhya. I'm a resident of Canton. So yeah, I want to speak to how I find the resolution or the call to be inadequate. Not only in capturing the extent and the gravity of the situation in Palestine, not only in capturing our participation in the genocide of Palestinians as tax-paying citizens and residents, but also in drawing false equivalences between the occupying settler and the occupied subject. Israel is a settler colonialist ethno-state that with the financial and military support of every imperialist nation, has strong-armed its illegitimate settlements and borders onto the Palestinian people who are punished and demeaned for resisting the demolition of their homes, the murder of their families and neighbors, the imprisonment of their children, the desecration of their mosques and churches, the pillaging of their farms, the destruction of their olive trees, their hospitals, their universities, their bakeries. It is integral that we call this for what it is, ethnic cleansing, occupation, colonization, and that we recognize a people's resistance against their colonizers as a fight for liberation. Many of us, and not all of us, many of us are settlers in Canton. Those of us who are white or those of us who are voluntary immigrants or children of voluntary immigrants, for example. And we shy away from that label and we don't acknowledge that Canton itself is built on land dispossessed from Anishinaabe people and other displaced indigenous people because it calls into question the legitimacy of our claims to this land. Because we may have other places where we can safely go and would accept us because it would be inaccurate to represent our relationship to our natural and social environments largely based on extraction, as equivalent to the relationships that indigenous people have to this land. Israeli settlers and Palestinians lead extremely different lives. Palestinians are imprisoned and rendered refugees on land that they defend, that they have to exist on, and that they can prove that their ancestors lived on. Canton and Michigan define itself through active colonialization, colonialism. So it follows that Michigan participates in the genocide of Palestinians. Not just the carpet bombing and indiscriminate attacks on Palestinians across Gaza, West Bank, and occupied Palestine that we're witnessing over the last few months, but the same violence that has spread across decades. Michigan has ignored calls for divestment, but labor is united for Palestine. Students are united for Palestine. The masses are united for Palestine. So there is hope locally. What I want to demand is that each and every local address in Michigan of the brutality that Palestinians are undergoing recognizes Palestinian self-determination, recognize their right to return to their homelands, recognizes that Palestinian prisoners must be released en masse, and calls for an end to any commercial, financial and military support to Israel.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kais Dewas. And I'm mainly here because I'm also from Gaza. And so far in the last two months, at least 40 members of my family have been killed. We're losing count, so I can't say how many exactly, but my uncle has passed away due to a lack of care in Gaza, leaving his three children, my cousins. My second cousin and his whole family died to the bombing yesterday. And so far, we just, I mean, my family is being minimized daily. And so I would love to see this resolution passed just so that the rest of my family will survive. Thank you.
Please state your name and begin.
Honorable council members, I extend my gratitude for each of you listening and taking your valuable time today to hear our collective of voice, including my own. My name is Tarek Bazey. I'm a resident here in Canton of Hamlets, and I've called Canton home since 1998. It's where I've chosen to grow up and build my life. As a third-generation American, my roots can be traced back to the Lebanon and Syria, which have been under bombardment from Israel in addition to the atrocities being committed in Gaza. It is important for me to note that my grandfather served as a medic in the army during the Korean War and that my love for this country, our armed forces, my state, and particularly Canton runs deep inside of me, especially as Canton High School was home to many experiences that helped shape who I am today. While our community, like any other, is not without imperfections, my family has felt safe here for the better part of 25 years. As a proud member of Canton community, I have contributed here as a youth basketball coach in the CEBL, as an assistant basketball coach at Discovery Middle School, Canton High School, and as a freshman coach for Canton as well. I'm not sure if we can still say this, but go Chiefs. Lastly, I, I've found myself as a founding member of the MECA Center that has recently opened here in Canton. In 2013, my wife and I were looking to build our life together and start a home, and we chose Canton for three main reasons. A favorable mileage rate, exceptional school system, and third, the diversity that Canton brings. And that diversity is what allows my now three daughters, ages nine, five and three, to grow up in a town that they can be themselves without fear of ridicule and without, and with, being met with the celebration of diversity. That is, is what Canton, in my mind, is all about. So I emphasize here that I am a member of the community and been an active member of the community for over 25 years, and I am who you guys represent. So my family views this resolution, if passed, as a reflection of our collective identity as conscious individuals who have not lost sight of moral value or our humanity. If Martin Luther King once said, "If injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere", the injustices endured by the Palestinians for the past 75 years is the greatest threat to humanity today. So let me be clear that a call for a ceasefire is in no way, shape or form anti-Semitic. Rather, it is an appeal to cease all violations and suffering from all sides, allowing for the unobstructed flow of humanitarian aid, water, food and electricity to flow to those in need. I implore each member of the council to cast their vote guided by their conscience. And once again, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Salaam alaikum. I greet everybody in this room with a greetings of peace. My name is Dewud. Many in the community know me as Dewud. You can call me David too. That's the name I was born with. I am a Canton resident. I've lived here for almost two years. I moved here because of the Muslim community, Masha Allah, and, and the overall environment to raise my children in. I have three young children under the age of six. The leisure services presentation, I'm like, I want to bring my kids to everything he showed us. I want, I come, I speak in the mic because I want you to know I'm a convert to Islam. I converted 10 years ago, so I have been Muslim for 10 years. I was raised Jewish, so I, there are many, I get comments that, "You're the first person I've met like that." So I want you to hear my voice, and I want you to hear everybody's voice up here. Thank you for drafting this resolution, and thank you for holding this commentary. I want to reiterate what everybody has said before me. This resolution, as it's written, does not do justice to the oppression of the Palestinian people. I don't have much detail. I am not as well-informed as many of my brothers and sisters who have already spoken and who will speak after me, but I do want to share one piece of information. One of the, the first sister who spoke mentioned the term Nakba. Please write this down and look this up. Write it down and look it up because you need to know this if you're going to speak on this topic. If you're going to pass a resolution on this topic, you need to know what this term is. There have been senior-level officials in the current Israeli administration calling for a 2023 new Nakba, okay? Please, please take that into your heart as you consider passing this resolution now and movements in the future. I don't have much information to share other than that, but I do want to share the gentleman who was here, who spoke early on with the hat, the army hat, who commended the police. As he walked out, he greeted us all. He thanked us. He said, "I support the Palestinian people." He's a Vietnam veteran. He knows the difference between war and genocide, and he says he knows this is genocide. We asked him to get back on the mic, and he said, "No, they wouldn't listen to me." We said, "Of all of us, you're the one they would listen to you most." So I, I wish he had had the courage to share this in front of you or had the time or whatever his, you know, obligations were. But I want to make sure you hear his voice as well as mine, as well as everybody's here. So I just want to recap. Please, please pass this resolution so we can stop the violence now. But please know that this resolution does not do the genocide and the oppression justice. So please pass this now to stop the violence now, but please consider putting a resolution on the books in the future to revise the current wording of this resolution to do more justice to the oppression. Thank you.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Fawzi Afid. Dear Canton council members, when you all proposed a resolution calling for a ceasefire, it reinforced why many of us can't, when many of us chose Canton to reside in. It's a diverse and welcoming community that values peace, justice and compassion. Thank you. I wanted to touch on an important point. The resolution mentioned the Hamas attack without reference to background or context. It would be disingenuous of us to address recent events without looking at the root cause, ferocious colonialism, illegal occupation and a brutal apartheid system that was opposed by Israel upon the Palestinians for decades, well before October the 7th. It's important to note that criticism of a country's policies is not criticism of its citizens. When I criticize Saudi Arabia, I'm not an Islamophobe. To conflate anti-Zionism with antisemitism is incorrect and reductionist, and it is meant to remove the criticism of the colonial apartheid state of Israel and twist it into people hating Jews, which can't be further from the truth. Judaism is a beautiful and peaceful faith. The reality is that this is not a religious conflict. It is about an occupier and the occupied, a colonizer and the colonized. It's rooted in the warped idea of a supremacy of one people, of one people over another and their claim to be an indigenous people's land. This policy of dispossession and ethnic cleansing is part of Israel's Likud Party charter. In order for a settler colonial state to survive, those displaced must be dehumanized so they are valued as inherently less valuable. We've seen it throughout history and we see it now in Israel. I'm shocked when witnessing Israeli leaders and cabinet members refer to Palestinians as animals and worse. In the West Bank, there is no Hamas, but we are, we are seeing unchallenged settler vigilantism and hundreds of kids are imprisoned without charge or due process. Under international law, an occupying power has a legal obligation to provide objects necessary for religious worship as well as supplies essential for survival to the population of the territory it occupies. Not only has Israel's years of siege and blockade limited these supplies to Gaza, but after October 7th, they completely cut off these life essentials. This is a violation of international humanitarian law. Israeli leaders have verbalized their intent for ethnic cleansing in Gaza several times, and we observe their apocalyptic fury of retribution and collective punishment in their bombing campaign of slaughter and destruction which has targeted internationally protected structures and people. These are war crimes. Harretts reported that Israel has killed a higher proportion of civilians in Gaza than any conflict in the 20th century, including World War I and World War II. We are witnessing a live genocide on our screens, yet people are failing to see Palestinians as human enough to deserve life, dignity and freedom. Doesn't everyone deserve these things? The existence and rights of one people should never be reliant upon the subjugation and killing of another. What Israel has done to the Palestinians for decades using our tax dollars is inhumane, and as Americans, if we are not outraged, then we all need to assess our humanity.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing? I just implore you all to exercise moral and political courage to include in the original resolution that there must be an acknowledgement and a denouncement of Israel, Israel's numerous UN Security Council violations, war crimes, illegal settlements, colonial domination, racist apartheid system and brutal occupation.
Please state your name and go ahead.
My name is Sarah Patel, and I have been a resident of Canton since 2006. My three children are growing up in Canton. I started out my career as a social worker doing infant mental health in Wayne County. I'm currently a school social worker in two of the elementary schools in the PCCS district. And I applaud the efforts being made to raise awareness to the violence happening in Palestine. I'm deeply concerned with the mental health impact of the 75-year-old illegal occupation of Palestine and the infringements of Palestinian rights due to the apartheid state. As an American, we will never truly understand what it means to live in a controlled state with little rights as Palestinians do. But we do know that it results in violence, causing trauma in multiple generations, regardless of age. I'm also concerned with the detention of children and youth by the Israeli occupying forces with no due process, which has occurred for decades. In 2005, a study was done to assess traumatized populations under war conditions, and it was found that the children of Gaza suffered the most trauma. This was 18 years before October 7th and even before Hamas gained power. In 2021, UNICEF reported that one in three children in Gaza needed care for conflict-related trauma. Save the Children interviewed 500 children in 2022 and found 80% of the children exhibited symptoms of emotional distress, all before October 7th. I cannot imagine the magnitude of trauma Palestinian children are facing. Palestinian children are facing today since October 7th. Now we are witnessing thousands of orphaned children who have lost their families, extended families, their limbs, eyesight, skin, and more importantly, the basic right to be, not feel, but be safe from violence at the hands of the Israeli government. I often wonder what healing would look like for a Gazan child. I don't, and I don't think anyone has the answer to that. But I do know that healing cannot start until a ceasefire happens and until the occupation of Palestine ends.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Zayat, and I am a Canton resident. Gaza is a 25-mile-long by seven-mile-wide strip of land that has been placed under the complete siege by the Israeli government since 2007, subjugating Gazans to a systematic and disproportionate violence for many decades. I urge you all to review the reports on Gaza and Palestine from the Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, the UN Special Repertoire to Palestine, and the Human Rights Council. For over 60 days now, Israel has been indiscriminately bombing Gaza using the most sophisticated missiles ever known to humanity. This includes chemical weapons. According to Euromed Human Rights Monitor, Israel has dropped more than 25,000 tons of explosives on the Gaza Strip. This is the equivalent of two nuclear bombs, which is dropped on this very small strip of land. Nearly 90% of Gazans, 1.9 million people, have been displaced. Over 6,000 children have been killed, mothers having to write their children's names on their limbs so that they can be identified if they're bombed, doctors treating white phosphorus burns and performing amputations without anesthesia or clean water. The apocalyptic scene of Gaza tells a story of devastation and catastrophe. The UN spokesperson James Elder has just returned from Gaza, and this is what he said. "There's no water, no sanitation, no food, just bombs." It is not okay to threaten civilians. It is not okay to threaten civilian infrastructures. It is not okay to starve a population, and it certainly is not okay to continue this bombing campaign. This is not self-defense. These are war crimes under the Fourth Geneva Convention. Anything we can do to make this end sooner is a victory for humanity. These senseless acts do not bring us any closer to a lasting and just solution, not for the Israelis and not for the Palestinians. I urge you, our city members, to vote for a sustained ceasefire, the release of hostages, and allowing a desperately needed humanitarian aid. These resolutions matter because they reflect the will of the people, and they put pressure on those in power. Our city of Canton is a beautiful city that is rich in diversity, culture, and tolerance. We condemn hate in all its forms, antisemitism, anti-Palestinian, or Islamophobic. So let us join the dozens of American cities who have passed similar resolutions, along with the 152 countries who have, who have voted today at the UN General Assembly. All are urging President Joe Biden to support a sustained ceasefire and end this violence. I thank you all for this opportunity, for this, for this resolution. Thank you.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Imran Jalal, and I love being a resident of Canton. So, again, thank you so much for giving us your time today. Here are some of the reasons for the war. The locals don't feel represented in the decision-making process. Number two, they also desire for self-governance, seeking greater autonomy and self-determination in governing their affairs. Number three, they seek to free themselves from the restrictions and monopolies imposed by, by the occupiers. Number four, they want protection of individual rights and liberties, which they strongly believe the occupiers are violating. And finally, the conflict arises over governance and control. The occupiers attempt to extend greater control over the land, including the presence of military and law enforcement that's seen as oppressive, led to the growing tensions and intention in the land. This ultimately escalated into the conflict as the locals sought to assert their autonomy and resist what they believe is an unjust rule. I just gave you five solid reasons for the war. Do you know who led this war, who the leader was of this revolution? It was our own George Washington, our first president of the United States of America, when he and other leaders of the American Revolution sought to challenge the British authority and establish a new nation based on principles of self-governance, individual rights, and liberty. The culmination of these grievances and aspirations led to the Declaration of Independence in 1776 and the subsequent revolution war and endeavor that ultimately resulted in the birth of our beautiful United States of America, a free nation that we all live in. Isn't this a great history lesson for all of us? Our country is beautiful. Knowing as how beautiful our country is and knowing how our country was formed, is it not right that we also support Palestine that have the same freedom just like us? Thousands of lives have been lost in Gaza, especially of children. It is just not right, and it does not seem right for anyone of us. The price is too much. Our country, just like me and all of us here, is not perfect. We all know that. But we have the heart and the grit to course correct and do the right thing. So I ask, I ask this body here to please vote in favor of a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Next. Please state your name and go ahead. Three minutes.
Respected board members, my name is Anam, and I'm extremely grateful to be a resident of Canton. I'm grateful that my parents chose to raise me in a city that wants to stand on the right side of history, a city where our officials are proactively taking steps to ensure the safety of their residents by taking a stand against Islamophobia, antisemitism, and any sort of violence or bigotry against its residents. And while I'm grateful for your bravery to stand against injustice, I do wish that the board had worked more closely with the very residents that it's trying to represent. A ceasefire resolution is a necessary step to ensure the safety of all Canton residents and to memorialize Canton as being a city that stands against injustice. That being said, I do want to emphasize that what we say is just as, if not more important, as how we say it. A 2021 report from the Human Rights Watch titled, "A Threshold Crossed", concludes that the Israeli regime over the Palestinians is indeed apartheid. Amnesty International, the United Nations, as well as the Israeli Human Rights Organization, known as B'Tselem, also classified the Israeli regime and the occupation of Palestine as apartheid. A 2020 report from Save the Children, as well as subsequent research from the UN Special Repertoire, finds that the Palestinian children are detained illegally by the Israeli military and face physical, emotional, and sexual abuse in detention. They are withheld without representation in undisclosed locations. 86% of these children are beaten and denied access to medical care. These reports include the West Bank, which is internationally recognized as Palestinian territory. Amnesty International has also confirmed the use of internationally-prohibited white phosphorus as well as collective punishment by the Israeli military, both of which are stark violations of international law. Just as we would not start history with the Warsaw Ghetto uprising, we cannot start history on October 7th. As the UN Secretary General has stated, these events did not happen in a vacuum. Any resolution that is missing context, both historical and current, is incomplete. Now, whether this resolution passes today or the board decides to wait and make amendments before passing, I look forward to working with you all in conjunction with local Palestinian activists and organizations on amendments to this resolution that are more representative of us as a community. As Desmond Tutu stated, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Again, I want to thank this board for not remaining neutral, for speaking out and trying to represent your constituents when so many other officials have failed us. We are grateful to you and will remember your efforts come election time next year. We will support you as you are trying to support us now. Now, I would also like to take a moment to address not just the board, but my community. Listen to your youth when we speak. We are the ones creating social media and grassroots campaigns for justice in Palestine in Congo and Sudan. It is us who are the ones being doxxed in our universities for speaking out against injustice. From the Black Lives Matter movement to the Free Palestine movement, we are the ones being brutalized on the streets during protests by police. We are the ones being fired for speaking out, but continue to speak anyway and louder than before. When we speak our truth to power, please do not patronize us with talks about strategy and politics. That is exactly the type of complacency that has led us to this very moment in history in the first place. When you hear us speak our truth, listen. Thank you and free Palestine.
Please state your name and go ahead. Three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mohammed Thabado. I am a Palestinian-American, and I want to say thank you to everybody who's come here to support the, the effort to try to call for a ceasefire in Palestine. I can say that I've never been prouder to be a Palestinian. So thank you to everybody. I like to say that I recently moved back to Michigan. I used to live here when I was younger as a teenager, and I moved back as an adult because I remember living in Michigan was a great place to be. A lot of diversity in all the communities. People are able to find different opportunities within the different cities. And I specifically chose Canton because I researched Canton, and I knew Canton was a great city, safe, good schools, and a community that cares. I can, I don't know if I can say more than all the speakers that have spoken already about all of the statistics, all of the comments from world officials and everything that's been said. So I'm going to talk to you about some personal firsthand experience I've had as a Palestinian-American who's lived in the West Bank for two years as a teenager. And of course, what I'm talking about now is, is miniscule to what's going on, current state, right? So when I was a kid, I was coming home from school, or actually, I was going to the bus stop where I would take a ride home from school. And as I was walking, you would cross past an Israeli military occupation checkpoint. And for no reason whatsoever, they knew I was a kid coming home from school. They could see my backpack. They called me over. And this is the only time in my life that I have ever had my life threatened and a weapon pointed at me. And I can tell you that that was in a time of what we call relative peace, where there was really nothing happening, and people were being harassed left and right. And the fact that I was an American citizen got me out of that pretty, pretty simple and easy. I can tell you, I've heard many, many stories of people who are just going about their daily life as Palestinians and find themselves on the wrong side of the street and getting shot and wounded or even getting killed for no reason whatsoever. Kids, adults, women and children, all because of, it was the, the feeling of the person at the time. This is, this is daily life for Palestinians. It is intentional. It is meant to break the will of the Palestinian people so that they do lose hope and just go with whatever is told for them to go with. I can say probably that this is, this tactic hasn't worked for 75 years, and it's not working today, and that if we don't do anything about it, then they look to us as if they're left on an island with no support. So I just want to say that, first of all, thank you to everybody that's come out to support, and I hope that the, the council takes everything we've said to heart and, and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Please state your name and go ahead. Three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ayah Bouzama. I'm a resident of Canton, born and raised, and a student at Michigan State University. I'm speaking to you today to urge you to pass the resolution calling for an end to the conflict in Gaza and Israel and to add to it the historical context of the occupation of Palestine and the identification of genocide and Israel's war crimes. As a Palestinian-American, again, born and raised in Canton, I've appreciated the feelings of compassion and peace and justice here at home in Canton. But with the unspeakable massacre that Israeli forces are imposing on Gaza and the West Bank, their actions that have, since the creation of Israel in 1948, have aligned with the UN definition of a genocide, it's clear that I would not be allowed this privilege if born in my grandparents' hometown of Bethlehem instead. I would not have had the privilege of being considered human. Rather, I might have been one of the 18,500 Palestinians killed by Israel since October 7th, or the 8,000 missing and presumed dead, or the 50,000 severely injured, or the millions displaced and starving without aid, again, due to our government's part in that. I might have been inside, rather, an ambulance that Israeli forces shoot at or just have been a target for walking down the street. While there's no comparison, as a student at Michigan State University, I know what it means to have violence and death at your front door. The fear of a gun being pointed at you out of hate. We're still trying to heal from that, but that feeling is something that the children of Gaza, the university students of Gaza, the pregnant women of Gaza, the parents, the grandparents of Gaza are feeling every single day. And yet, I'm still reeling. Watching this happen in Palestine at an unimaginable magnitude of the same Palestine where colonial powers and the creation of Israel displaced my family along with 700,000 others from their homes 75 years ago. This hate has been spread across the nation after these years, and the only thing that can dispel it is the truth. So standing here with my community and our leaders, I know we have the, the power to fight for change because we've done it before. And while the halls of Congress are deaf to the majority's calls for a ceasefire, our Canton community must rise to the occasion. Passing, passing this resolution, making this change is what's most beneficial for our community and the fellow human beings in Gaza. Thank you.
Hello. Salaam alaikum. My name is Haseen Abdul. I live in Canton. I just, I don't want to repeat the information. It's been very painful, two long months. And, but I want to take this opportunity to thank you, to thank you for initiating it while other communities, you know, we didn't have to push you to do it. Yes, it's not perfect, as many of other things are not perfect in this context. But I thank you for starting this,[1592.40] I thank you for starting this, for standing by our community throughout the last 10, 15 years. And I hope you can continue standing for justice as you learn more about the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Dawud Walid. I'm a resident of Canton. I'm also the executive director of CARE Michigan, Council on American Islamic Relations, which is also based in Canton. Of course, I'm in favor of the resolution for the ceasefire. However, I would respectfully request that maybe there's some slight amendments that need to be done. Maybe not even adding words, but maybe taking some things out. For instance, having in there October 7th, I believe, is highly problematic. We can't talk about one date without talking about other dates. The situation that is taking place did not start off in October 7th. This is really historical erasure. And also, in reference to this, it's not a war between Israel and Hamas, it's a siege upon Palestinian people. 20,000 people killed, half of them children, okay? And not even 1% of these are so-called militant fighters who've been killed. So, we need to be accurate. And being accurate is very important, right? Telling the right narrative is very important, right? Because it's false narratives that has our country continuing to support oppression historically and doing wrongdoing to this particular day. For instance, I'll just make a couple of examples for you, right? It is a false narrative of how our country to this day still has not given justice to indigenous people of this land and given my people reparations. It is a false narrative when former President Ronald Reagan declared Nelson Mandela a terrorist for fighting apartheid. It is a false narrative if we went to Iraq based upon lives that had 1 million Iraqis dead. So, we need to get the narrative right. So, again, I appreciate the ceasefire. We need a ceasefire, but we have to get the narrative right. It is a false narrative that led to yesterday, my office having to call the Canton police because we got a death threat in my office in Canton, as a direct relationship to what's taking place, a fake news and a false narrative going on in relationship to Palestine. It's fake narrative that led to three Palestinians being shot in Vermont. It is fake narrative that led to a Farmington Hills man who is arrested right now in jail for terroristic threats to kill all Palestinians in Dearborn. It is a false narrative that led to two Palestinian Muslims being stabbed in Illinois, one of them a six-year-old. So, again, we have to get the narrative right. False narratives have consequences, including right here in this city of Canton, where we have Canton residents, Muslims, CARE Michigan's office getting death threats.
Please go ahead.
Hi, dear respected members of the Board of Trustees and supervisors, thank you for bringing this resolution forward. More than anything, I think this is a cathartic moment. Our community here in Canton, which has so many people from so many backgrounds across the world, have had this pent-up frustration about what is happening overseas. Our local leadership at the congressional level, the senatorial level, and our president has not been hearing us. We've been feeling ignored. And the opportunity to be here on public record and express our frustration is something that's very helpful and very healing for us. And we really appreciate the fact that you're going to have a resolution that calls for a ceasefire. The resolution is not perfect. I agree with many of the comments that were made earlier, but it is a start. And I believe cities across our country, even here in Michigan, Detroit, Ann Arbor, Ferndale, Ypsilanti, these are all cities that are saying the same thing. And we hope that our congressional and elected leadership take heed and do the right thing. In particular, I just wanted to point out that the, this is important for us because there has been rising antisemitism, Islamophobia, and hatred and bigotry of all kind. It impacts Canton. We're a very diverse community. And for the council, the Board of Trustees, to take this resolution up sends a strong message that you care about our feelings, you care about our family and friends that are suffering overseas. And we really hope that this is a message that is heard across the country. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Yabat Alquaa. I'm a Canton resident in District 10. I'm a Palestinian American. I am a granddaughter of a 1948 Nakba survivor. To this day, my 94, 95-year-old grandfather speaks about the home he built and the olive trees he planted. I am here to express my support for the proposed resolution advocating for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Lifting the siege will allow humanitarian aid and basic necessities to enter Gaza. As the death toll continues to climb and the humanitarian crisis worsens, we must all stand together to call for a ceasefire. We all mourn the tragic loss of the human life, especially that of children. As someone who has their master's degree in English as a second language, I have worked with children who are products of war. The PTSD episodes that I witnessed still haunt me. As taxpaying Americans, we have a duty to speak out when our tax dollars are used to fund a genocide. The bombardment decimated infrastructure and massacred civilians at an alarming rate, leaving little to no shelter for Palestinians during the winter months. The entire population in Gaza is struggling to find safety, shelter, food, drinking water during this catastrophe. As a Palestinian American, I am horrified by the scale of devastation inflicted on the people of Gaza. I have many relatives still in Gaza and have been very concerned about their safety for the past two months, waking up every day, not sure if they will make it to the next. Although the resolution falls short of acknowledging the history of the brutal occupation that Palestinians have been subjected to, I strongly request that you vote yes for a ceasefire. Thank you for your time. Come November, we will remember.
Thank you. State your name, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Arushi. That wonderful woman up there is my mom, Tanya. My family comes from a country divided and brutalized by colonization. We directly trace our roots back to Bengali communities, divided, assaulted, and stripped away of cultures and traditions. Israel was one of the first nations to recognize the independent Bangladesh in February 1972. But because of the, after the independence, the newly formed country decided to officially reject the recognition of Israel because of its continued oppression at that time of the people of Palestine. And that is why, as a Bengali American now, I'm unequivocally an ally of the Palestinian community, because a free Palestine represents liberation everywhere. I also urge you to pass this resolution at the very least, but remind that it is not enough. As people have so brilliantly explained before me today, Palestine needs more. Our voices at this level have an impact on national policy. And as elected representatives, you get your power from us, so listen to us. I also want to show and remind you that these resolutions have tangible implications on our communities as well. I am barely three connections away from the student shot and paralyzed at Brown. I have also organized and protested as a student at Yumish Ann Arbor. Their students have been ignored, physically attacked, doxxed, emotionally brutalized at the hands of an administration and police because they refuse to listen to our voices and our demands. And we are tired. And so, when you, as the Canton Board and government, stand up for what is right, the community hears you and they feel that support. And so, when I speak for a free Palestine, I speak for a sustained ceasefire, I speak for a right to return, and I speak for the collective liberation of all. You don't need to be Palestinian to have humanity for those suffering in Gaza and throughout the occupied land. So, I urge you to pass this resolution and free Palestine.
Please state your name, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Malek Abu Zima. I'm a Palestinian American. I've lived in Canton, Michigan, my whole life. To say that I love and I value this community is a very, very strong understatement. Anyone that knows me knows that I absolutely will, I'm dedicated to Canton and I love this community very, very, very much. I am not going to stand here right now and repeat all of the history that has happened in Palestine that everyone has already so eloquently explained before me. And I don't want to repeat the same statistics that we've all seen on Instagram or we've all seen on the news, because I feel like that we've already unfortunately become so desensitized to so many of these issues just because of the mass stream of information that we're constantly consuming. What I want to talk to you guys about today is I would like to talk about a conversation I've had recently with a, with my Arabic teacher who lives in Gaza. I was talking to her during my lesson, and she, after just explaining to me all the atrocities that she has had to endure, I'm just going to talk about one in particular. They have no means of transportation. They are currently using frying oil, the canola oil that we use to just fry stuff in our kitchen. They're currently using that for fuel for their vehicles. That's the only way that they're able to get places around in Gaza. She then goes on to talk about how carbon emissions from these cars are going to pollute the air and cause respiratory issues to the people living in Gaza. Most likely because they're using frying oil for their cars and not just regular gasoline like we have the privilege of using here in America. We're not forced to be using canola oil to power our cars. If you have any interest in environmental issues occurring all around the globe, hearing this should really alarm you. If the 2 million people in Gaza haven't already been killed by Israel's bombs, snipers, tanks, or missiles paid by us by using our tax dollars, they're going to soon be killed by their intense thirst, their hunger, that none of us are, we are so lucky that we don't even have to imagine how hungry they are, by diseases that everyone in this room is fortunate enough to never have to worry about. And because of this, if, because of this, I support this resolution calling for a ceasefire. Because if they have not already been killed by, like I mentioned before, by the bombs, snipers, bullets, they will be killed by their thirst, their hunger, or their sicknesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Abu Shar. I live in Canton. I teach at the university. My family has been through this for 75 years, as many families. I'm originally Palestinian. We immigrated to three or four countries. I just want to say, I'm not going to repeat numbers. I just want to put you in there. In Gaza, I have cousins there. I have an aunt who's a 70-year-old. They had to move to three, four, five different places. Every day, we call, we check if someone has died. That's the only question. That's the threshold for us. Did someone die? That's it. We're not talking about thirst, hunger, no life, where they're threatened by dying, by epidemics. I'd love to sit here and tell you, stand here and tell you about the 75 years. I'd love to stand here and tell you about my family's home taken over by people who haven't lived in this land for 1,000 generations and we were displaced. I'd love to sit here and tell you about administrative detentions for 15- and 14-year-olds, thousands of kids in Israel, the democracy of the Middle East. But, you know, President Biden said that today behind closed doors on an off-camera event. This war is useless. This war is hurting Israel itself, the image. This war is hurting the United States moral reference, being a moral reference to the world. What is the point of all of this? They're not succeeding in any of the campaigns if I just want to be empathetic or think of the other side. They're not succeeding in any campaigns. It's been going on for two months. Nothing is happening, nothing is changing. It's only an extension to Netanyahu and this government's extremist, extremist view of Palestinians. Today, multiple statements saying there will never be a two-state solution by Israeli officials, all right? Then what are you doing here? What is the point of this war? I'd love to talk to you about many other things, but now, I'd love to talk about this resolution, just pointing and placing it as a conflict between Israel and Hamas, as if most of the people have been dying and children, 7, 8,000, I lost count of the numbers, haven't been civilians. But for now, I only have one priority. We all only have one priority, to stop this. And then you're welcome after that to come to my home here in Canton, and I'll talk to you about Palestine, I'll talk to you about history, about our right. For now, ceasefire, stop killing us.
Thank you. Hi, please state your name.
Good evening. Mohammed Oratella. Much of a dinosaur, I guess. I've been in Canton since 1978, and I love the area. We moved here from Detroit. Can't say enough about the area. I want to thank you for civility and giving us this forum here, because I saw what happened in Florida where, you know, they were, "Kill them all, there's no innocence," from the same people sitting in your chairs. My story is a little bit different. My grandfather fought in World War I against the British in Gaza, where he was injured. My wife's parents were ethnically cleansed from their village in 1948, so was my grandmother. They were thrown out at gunpoint. I came here in 1969, two years after the 1967 war. And that quote, "But for the grace of God, there go I," applies to me very directly, because when we left our homes in 1967 during the war, we fled to the caves of our village. And while we were there in the caves, women and children, my nephew was four days old. My mother got spooked, can't tell you why, but she said, "We gotta leave." But why? "We gotta leave." So, she hunted us all and we ran under an olive grove. Two minutes later, an Israeli jet shot a missile through the mouth of that cave and destroyed it all. I was six years old. I saw bodies on the floor. I saw people die. My mother would tell me, "Close your eyes, don't look, or you smell, the smell of death, the stench of death lasts for you forever." Then I go back to those children in Gaza and see what they go through, the trauma, the things they endure, the mangled bodies they pulled from underneath there. I'm a grandfather, I have five grandkids. My grandkids, the six, seven-year-olds, they came to me the other day, said, "Sido," which means grandpa, "Why are they killing us?" How do you explain to a seven-year-old why they're, because I took him last year to Palestine. I took him back home to see the great-grandfather's village, the olive trees that have been in my family for over 1,000 years. And I took him back and showed him the house that I was born in, Jerusalem, that was built by my grandfather, by his hands, and all the land that we lost. Then he asked me, "Why are they killing us?" What do you tell a seven-year-old? "Why are they killing us? Why do they hate us? Why do they hate us?" How do you explain that to a seven-year-old, right? Everybody comes here and they talk about antisemitism, but nobody talks about the trauma that's endured. A ceasefire is the minimal that you can do, minimal, but it's a first step. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Aziz Aganam Bazey. Good evening to the board members, township officials, and residents. I'm a Palestinian Muslim-American, and I'm also a homeowner and resident of Canton in addition to being a PCCS social worker. Yesterday, the people on the ground in Gaza called for a strike against work, school, shopping, and basic daily tasks. Yesterday, I had to decide to go to work and to help the children of Canton despite my children, my people in Gaza and throughout Palestine being massacred. This is a testament to one's own needs not being mutually exclusive. It is my experience as a Palestinian woman that gives me the strength, skills, and empathy to get up every day and meet kids at their lowest and help them believe in themselves. We are one humanity, and this resolution is needed. However, it's missing a lot of important facts. Kate, if I could have your attention? Thank you. The people of Canton need to know you all stand on the right side of history, that they don't spend their money, live in a town, and invest in a place that stood on the wrong side of history. We won't do it. We won't stand quiet. This resolution lacks the language and ideas that I would like to see in support of a sovereign and self-determined state of Palestine. But I recognize it is an act of good faith, and I'm open to helping you, you know, amend that and to get that to where it needs to be. I call on each one of you on voting this resolution. I call on each one of you to pass this resolution. It is the human thing to do, because children deserve to be safe in their homes, schools, places of worship. These places should be safe for them, not a graveyard of the limbs of the ones they used to love covered in rubble with silent cries for a ceasefire. As the children of Canton, the children of Palestine deserve to grow old from the river
Hello, everybody. My name is Noor Mohammed. I've been a Canton resident for the last 40 years. My wife and I raised three boys here, and two of them are doctors, one is an engineer, and they all live in Canton. So, I've got solid roots here. You know, there's, in the pledge of allegiance, especially the flag, there's a line that says, "Under God." One united under God. It was introduced by Eisenhower. One nation under God. Great phrase. There is a book written by some American author, he was a very famous lawyer, I think his name was Hurley, very great businessman. He wrote a book by the name of One Nation Under Israel, basically saying that this is your God, Israel is your God. And he said, "Why he thinks that? You may not belong in that class, but White House, the Capitol Building, the Senate, the Congress, is, their God is Israel." And that, you have seen the resolutions from the very beginning about Israel, Israel created by the British, financed and armed by the Americans. There's blood of Americans had in there in what is the conflict now even. You saw the response of Joe Biden, Genocide Joe, when he first said something, you know, this guy was like, you know, like a madman. How can he please this, this, what do you call the new Nazi leader there in Israel, Benjamin Netanyahu? You know, who was saying that, "Oh, these people beheaded kids," and so on. Even the Israeli Defense Forces denied that, that the Hamas people did it. So, you have all this. In the Republicans, almost unanimous anti, for them, like I said, Israel is God. So, it's very difficult to go against your God, you know? And then there is, in the Democrats, you get a few oppositions, but on the whole, really, again, nothing. You all don't matter, because whatever is decided in the Congress and the president is, that is why they had a resolution which America vetoed, to stop, to have a ceasefire. What is ceasefire? There's no threat to Israel from anybody. Israel can take on the whole of the Arab world. Nothing they can do to Israel, you know? So, and there's, it's like the, what you call the victim trying to play the, you know, the oppressor trying to play the victim card, and that's what the press says. And that's what the press is. The press is under control by these people, by desire. Again, as I said, by the Zionist movements.
Thank you.
I hope you people, you know, study this thing, maybe read the books or whatever. Don't come, don't make Israel your God, you see?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Samara Siddiqui, and I've been, I was born and raised in Canton, and I love it so much. But thank you for putting forth this ceasefire resolution. And I want to share a phrase my mom used to say as a kid. She used to say, "It doesn't matter what you say, it's how you say it." This was also in regards of me, like arguing with my siblings, so... But yeah. I fully support a resolution asking for a ceasefire, but I ask that the resolution include the violent history of the formation of Israel and how damaging it has been for the Palestinian people. Please amend the wording of the resolution before you pass it. Thank you very much.
Could you please state?
My name is Osama Oda. I'm a Palestinian-American, a public health professional, a civil engineer. And I had the benefit of serving as a youth leader in the Canton community, for the Muslim community, for about seven years. It was my full-time job to uplift Muslim youth in Canton. And the city is very valuable to me, and it's valuable to a lot of my community members, as you've heard from them. And I wanted to, just on the behalf of my entire community, appreciate you all for actually putting forth this resolution and also listening to all of our grievances and the history of our struggle as Palestinians and so forth. I just wanted to just iterate one comment, and I don't want to belabor any of the points that were already mentioned or bring back anything else that was already said. What I really wanted to mention is, anyone who takes the time to read into this struggle will dispel any of the myths related to what's going on over there, if you just sit down and read the history about it. Unfortunately, in community, what we find is people don't read into the history of things. And instead, when conflict happens, it hurts the safety and well-being of a community. And I argue, I guess, that Canton is less safe because this type of conflict is happening. And that's why this type of resolution is so important. Because people don't take the time to study something. They instead tend to pick sides in a conflict and tend to argue with one another and fight with one another. And we see that in all sorts of areas of community, from youth to adults. So I think for the purposes of the safety and well-being of the Canton community, which I was a major part of uplifting the youth of its community, I think it's very important that we vote for this ceasefire, you know, notwithstanding the fact that all of these atrocities that my colleagues have all mentioned. I really encourage the council to vote for the ceasefire. I encourage that we commit to any resolutions that support the seizing of hostilities and the focus on more diplomatic, reasonable solutions, and support for H.R. 786. And thank you so much again for listening.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Fatima Rini. I appreciate the sentiments made by the many residents who have spoken before me. They have all mentioned the innocent women and children who are being killed in Gaza, because it speaks to the weak and vulnerable, and they are hoping to gain your sympathy. But I feel compelled to speak on behalf of the men in Gaza and those who are being killed as well. They are the ones we see in video after video, reporting on the scenes, digging through the rubble to save any survivors or pulled dead bodies to be buried and prayed over. They are doctors and nurses and those who comfort the surviving family members and injured while going through their own grief. Palestinian men deserve our compassion too. They are not presumed guilty just by virtue of being men. Palestinian boys and men are your community members. They deserve your attention and respect, and I urge you all to rethink how you speak about the victims of oppression. A ceasefire is necessary for all those in Palestine.
Please state your name.
Hi, Khairid Almatun. I've been a resident of Canton since 1999. Went to medical school in West Virginia, and I was like, "I always wanted to come back here. This is my community." And it's because of the people here why I come back. There is no place like home. Canton, like any other community, is only beautiful in its people. Its people make it beautiful. And these are the same people that if you hear the media or if you hear genocidal leaders say, "These are the people of darkness. These are the people of evil. These are subhuman. These are animals." The same people that came up and spoke today about families that got uprooted through genocide, through war, through hatred, through racism, through deceitment, that we were called the children of evil, the children of darkness, sub-animals. And as our elected leaders, you guys have to do, you guys have to do your part in representing your people. That means picking up books, listening to podcasts, obviously from neutral sources, but knowing the history, because we are a diverse people. It's our opportunity and it's our responsibility to know about the history of our people, and that's also your guys' responsibility as well. One thing I want to say is antisemitism is not antisemitism. I am proud to be an anti-Zionist. I would never want someone to call me an antisemite. Because Palestine was home to Muslims, Christians, and Jews before the fake creation of Israel. That's been a home to all Abrahamic faiths. Finally, we want to stop feeling guilty just living. We had a presentation about leisure services, the summit on the park, golf courses, weddings, baby showers, all of which I've known countless people delay or not post about or not go on vacations. It's my dad's birthday today, but he decided to be here today, because this is more important than any celebration currently. We want to stop feeling guilty. The first step to that is a ceasefire and a ceasefire now.
Please state your name.
My name is Zatir Majid Khan. I'm a citizen of Canton. Very safe and happy until October 7. And what I have seen in the news media, social media, YouTube, television, I can't think and focus on my writing. I'm an author. I have written five books. And I thought I was giving my last book. But one thing I don't understand, that there is a difference between a struggle for liberation and terrorism. Terrorism has no cause. They kill for no reason. But liberation of Palestine is a struggle by people who have been oppressed for at least sixty years. I am an eighty-five-years-old person. I don't think anybody is here over eighty-five yet. So what I have seen, Second World War, Korean conflict, Vietnam War, and conflict in Ukraine and other places. I'm a survivor of Vietnam War. If I was in Vietnam and killed, I would not be here talking to you today. But I want to tell you something that I appreciate that there is a difference between anti-Israel and being antisemitism. I know that JVP, the Joyce, Jews, WISE for Peace, has been also asking ceasefire all over the country. I want to tell you something that people don't understand what's going on behind the scene. I read immensely, so much that sometimes I can't read anymore. But I'll tell you that the New York Times has published that Al-Shifa Hospital in Gaza was not a terrorist camp. They killed staff, nurses, and doctors, and destroyed patients as well. I wrote to White House. I wrote to our senators, Gary Peters and Debbie Stefano and Debbie Dingell. I don't hear from them. We elected them. We voted for them. But where they are? There is a right to defend, and there is a right to go ahead and become an aggressive force and killing everybody. So I want to say that the money that are going to Israel for killing innocent people could have been used to treat my neuropathy in my hand and feet. They are freezing cold.
Thank you.
And I said one thing last, that you voted for the peace fire. And also, I say that to everybody here, "From river to the sea." Palestine will be free.
State your name.
Hello, my name is Leila Sayachi. Thank you for opening this forum and for considering this resolution. I come to you as a professor of philosophy, professor of ethics, and I'm going to take a different tack. Until now, you've reheard, I think, compelling evidence and reasons to pass this resolution. I want to suggest why you might not, and then tell you why you still should. I have heard people say that we have to eliminate Hamas, that we have to support Israel in order to get rid of Hamas. I've heard people ask me and online, "What would be a proportional response?" They ask me, "What do you think will be a proportional response?" And I think it's pretty clear. Not this. This is not a proportional response. I want to suggest that if you were born somewhere else, the fact that we are all here is an accident of nature. You could have been in Gaza. You could be in the West Bank. We are all human beings. It's an absolute fluke that we are here. The genetics that we have, where we live, the opportunities we have, the religion we follow, the identity we have, any one of us in this room could be in Gaza. That alone speaks volumes to the humanity of this situation. It's not political. The ends do not justify the means. Where have we heard that before? If we follow that tack, if we follow that principle, where did we land? We land in fascism. We land with a totalitarian state. The ends do not justify the means. If you go back and you think, "Well, we have to support Israel because we have to eliminate Hamas", The Washington Post and New York Times, I mean, you know it's bad when the New York Times comes out and lets us know that Israel has been supporting Hamas this entire time. So if that's the reason, know that hypocrisy runs deep, and we can rise above and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Juman Dole Alomari. I am a Canton resident for over twenty years. We came to Canton because of the diversity that we have in this beautiful city. I chose to raise my children here. They're PSAP grads, and now they are Michigan grads. And similar to some of the other students, they've actually have been subjected to some of the doxing and some of the other harassments on campus, unfortunately. First of all, I know this is a very heavy topic. This is not an easy resolution to take, and I commend you for doing this. I commend you for being proactive. I commend you for taking the step in the right direction to really represent us. I am from Palestinian roots, although I've lived here for most of my life. Both parents, actually, are Palestinians, and they're from the West Bank area. I have had a couple of family members who moved into Gaza, and they were subjected to some of the genocide that we have heard of and sniper killing as well. So this is not a very easy topic to talk about, and for you to take a proactive step to really represent all of our thoughts here is just fantastic. Although the resolution has a lot of areas of improvements, and if there is an opportunity to amend it in the future, we'd love to please help us do that effectively. But another thing I wanted to say is, although I'm Palestinian, I want you to look at this room. These are not all Palestinians. These are all from different ethnicity, different backgrounds, different religions, very similar to your board. So this beauty, and I'm very thankful as a Palestinian, I never really get to say it enough, that I want to thank everybody who is not Palestinian and here speaking for humanity. Thank you for doing this. I appreciate you. And I please would love for you to pass this resolution.
Anyone else in the room? I know I have a lot online also. Is there anyone else in the hall that wanted to come in? All right, so I go online, and there's a lot, okay. I will start with Logan. So let me allow you to talk, and then in three minutes. Okay, Logan, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm a twenty-year-old resident of Canton, and I have been my entire life. I am currently away at college. That's why I couldn't be there in person tonight. But even so, I still wanted to voice my opinion because of the necessity of this resolution. Even though the resolution language drastically undercuts the horrors that the Palestinians have gone through and should be updated in the future to adequately represent that, it is still crucial that the city of Canton shows its support by voting for us to say ceasefire to the violence in Palestine. Today, the U.N. voted on supporting a ceasefire in the General Assembly. A couple of days ago, the U.N. did the same, but in its Security Council. The United States voted no on both occasions. The General Assembly resolution passed, but the Security Council one did not because of the United States' permanent member status. This is important, since the Security Council decisions are legally binding for nations, but the General Assembly ones are not. The United States is the sole vote preventing the U.N. from taking binding action on enacting a ceasefire in Gaza. We must show the United States government that we do not agree with their decision and that they are misrepresenting their people, sixty percent of whom support a ceasefire. This support starts on the local level and it starts here in Canton. So please, see that your community supports a ceasefire and represent them accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back here. Okay. The next we have is Boss. Boss, you want to go ahead?
Hello?
Go ahead, Boss.
Hello?
Hello, Boss, you can go ahead. Three minutes.
Is that me?
Yes, go ahead. State your name and go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Mohamed. I am a Canton resident since 2000, actually. Happy in a diverse community, felt safe, raised six childrens, two doctors, two engineers, and one gona doctor. I cherish the diversity of the city of Canton. And I would like to add my two cents of addition to what the team has said. Since the 1980s, when the Jews was subject to massacres in Germany, they fled, and some of them took them to Palestine. They were welcomed by the Palestinians, housed, fed, and treated with the natural hostess of the Arabian nature. And ten, fifteen years later, those guests who supposed to be turn over and destroy every Palestinian village and establish what's so-called Israel. If this is the reward for helping others, I think that's a bad deed. And the result we see now is actually a consequence of seventy-five years of imprisonment, torture, detention, dehumanizing Palestinian, and making them feel like there are no values of a human being. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Yara Doma. I'm gonna... Please state your name and go ahead, Yara. Someone named Yara Doma online? Okay, let me go to the next one. We have Tracy Ringstad. Go ahead, Tracy.
Hi, my name is Tracy Ringstad. I wanted to voice support for the resolution. And after hearing others speak, I hope that their feedback can be incorporated as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have Mo, someone named Mo. So Mo, if you want to state your name and go ahead?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
How's it going? My name is Mohammed. I'm a Sudanese, and I'm from the South East Canton community. Everything that's there to be said has been said once again, and everybody has stated their support for a ceasefire very eloquently. I don't have anything prepared, but I'm just calling to give my two cents as well. We need a clear resolution for a complete ceasefire in Gaza and in Palestine and the West Bank. Waking up every day for the past 66 days and witnessing the hundreds of different massacres and witnessing the thousands of innocent children and women and men and elderly being murdered by my own tax dollars has been nothing less than a frustrating experience. And not even any English word can actually explain the frustration of this. This movement right here, it starts from the local level, it starts from each, every single one of us individually. Our silence and the silence of anybody to this situation is complicit in genocide. We can't be silent. This situation needs to be resolved from our city in Canton, locally, to the state level, to the federal level internationally. We need a complete ceasefire, and the situation did not start on October 9th. Since I was a young child, I've always been taught about Palestine from Arabic school and my Islamic school. And then growing up in middle school and my early high school, they seen the atrocities online, and actually seen video footage of elderly women getting beaten by the occupying, colonizing forces of Israel. And now all our tax dollars are going to them murdering innocent children. And this should concern you. And I know this is happening in a completely different part of the world, and you guys, here city members, I'm not sure if you guys see the actual firsthand footage of what's actually happening. And I challenge you guys to open, to leave the mainstream media, CNN and Fox News and all this stuff, and look at the firsthand resources, go on Twitter, go on Instagram, go on your alternative medias, watch Eyes on Palestine and see the children being murdered by your tax dollars. And imagine your family and your loved ones getting murdered. This is frustrating, to say the least. We need a ceasefire now, and we need a ceasefire forever, and we need to liberate Palestine from the river to the sea with all Palestinian Muslims, Christians, and Jewish folks. And we need more people to learn about Zionism and that Zionism does not represent Judaism and that the American government uses the excuse, same as the occupying force of Israel using the excuse of antisemitism and hiding behind the word antisemitism. This is false. And more people need to learn about the history of Palestine.
Thank you. Ifat Khalil. Ifat, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ifat. I am a Canton resident and a proud Cantonian and graduate of Canton High School. I'm a third-generation American. I am Palestinian as well. And I'm the granddaughter of Nakba survivors whose families fled during the Nakba in 48 as children. What's going on today in the world is not something that began on October 7th and is not something that will end when there is a ceasefire due to the fact that as long as there is an occupation, as long as there is injustice, and there are children growing up to see this injustice, there will always be resistance. Now, from our end, at the local level here in Canton, halfway across the globe, we have a responsibility as human beings to say that we do not stand for injustice. We do not support what is happening right now with hospitals, churches, mosques, inner west schools being blown up. 17,000 Palestinian children, women, and men being killed. And on the other side, you see TikToks mocking the civilians that are dying and are losing their loved ones. This is disgusting. This is literally the definition of genocide and is something that we as a population are not supporting. It's very clear today where the majority of people around the world stand. Now, from the local level, us saying that we do not support this genocide is crucial because these aren't our values here in Canton. And in the future, when we're looking at history, people are going to be asking, how did people not say anything about what's going on? And here in Canton, we want it to be known that we did not stand for this injustice. Back in the days of slavery, when Nat Turner and the slave rebellion occurred, that was something at the time they'd call it terrorism. Today, we call that resistance, and we look at it as a historical moment that changed the tide here in the US and allowed the civil rights movement to occur because that was injustice. What's going on today is something that we're also seeing as a tide turning from injustice to justice and human rights. So I urge you to vote for a ceasefire, and even though this is a local level, it's still something that shows our values as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next we have Lisa A. Lisa A. Lisa, do you want to go ahead and speak?
I'm Lisa Alarechi. My husband is from Gaza, and his family is there right now. And the ceasefire being passed is very important to me, very important to my husband. His family currently is homeless from the bombings. They no longer have anywhere to live, and they are kind of like in a migratory state. I think no matter what your political affiliation is or how you feel about Israel's right to exist or Palestinian people having a right to freedom, we can all agree that this is an overexcessive response. There has been greatly more deaths on the Palestinian side than there was on October 7th. And I know, we all know that this started way before October 7th, but not everyone is educated enough or cares to be educated enough on the real history of the situation and what's really going on. And I think we need to meet people where they're at, and I feel like this resolution to call for a ceasefire is more palatable to people that would be opposed to a ceasefire. And I support it 100%, and I thank you for bringing this resolution to the table.
Thank you. Now we have Nusaiba Anwar.
Hi, someone, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I was there in person, but I had to leave because I have little ones at home. I really appreciate everyone who's there right now, and especially our city council members, who I was so surprised and just uplifted hearing that Canton is calling for the resolution. It's not that we're having to present it to you guys, but you were calling for it and being proactive in it, which was unheard of to me. I had just attended the Ann Arbor one, which is a completely different feeling. And I want to thank all of you guys so much. Second of all, I just wanted to address something that is affecting the decision of ceasefire. I think we would have called on ceasefire immediately if not for the propaganda that's been disseminated since day one. First of all, about beheaded babies, that was debunked almost, you know, I guess it was about two weeks too late. But the White House took down this propaganda that was actually spread by our president, unfortunately. And the day after he said it, a child was killed in Chicago. The propaganda war has been something that has been disgusting to watch. Most recently, I heard Debbie Dingell, Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, who had been calling every single day for the last two months. She stood up and she was screaming about the rape and watching, talking about pictures and things like that, which is not evidence. People have asked for rape kits and things like that, and they said, no, we don't have any. Sorry, I got my little ones here. So I will end with this, that the propaganda war should not be something that you take into consideration right now. Put that aside and think about humanity. And the cry of wolf can be cried maybe once, maybe twice, but right now, this is the first time. With first beheaded babies, then with a hospital that has tunnels that would never appeared. Then we have the most recent, the rape thing that came out two months after the fact, and they suddenly started shouting about it right when the ceasefire ended. So I apologize, I was speaking so quickly, but I didn't want to take any more of your time, and I wanted to just address this, and thank you guys so much. You're an inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joshua Feinstein.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Joshua.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, well, thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. First of all, I thank you for the opportunity to speak and say that I am actually a proud Jewish-American citizen who is from a family who endured the Holocaust and a family where many people perished in the Holocaust. And speaking, I believe, on behalf of Jewish people, we're asking to please pass this humanitarian resolution. At the end of the day, the majority of voting Americans really support a ceasefire, and our hope is that elected officials around the country hear the voices of us, the people. And although I do not agree with some of the wording in the ceasefire resolution that could put forth, specifically the first sentence about October 7th being the beginning of history, I do acknowledge that it took a lot of hard work and courage to get here based on the current political landscape. So I want to say that the action of passing a ceasefire resolution here today in Canton, Michigan is an important step forward in ensuring that our collective vision of a ceasefire is finally demanded and orchestrated and becomes a permanent reality. And for those of you who may be hesitant about supporting this simple humanitarian resolution, as a fellow citizen, I just want to ask you a question. I want to ask, do you know why the Nazis were able to commit ethnic cleansing? Well, I'll tell you, their ultimate secret weapon was relying upon a silent and complicit public that didn't take any action. So I'd ask that we here today, although the language is not perfect, I would say that we stand up together and take the action and realize that it is in these moments where we have an opportunity to decide and define what it means to be a true human being. There is genocide that's occurring, and this is a humanitarian issue right now. So I just ask that people join me and everyone who's saying the words, you know, ceasefire. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Canton Board of Trustees. I'm grateful for the action that you're about to take and the work you'll do in the future to find justice here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have someone named TK. TK, TK, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. State your name.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here, opening your mind and heart for us. It's been really a very tough time for everyone, seeing the cruelty, the killing, how people are treated in a very bad way and humiliated every day. The starvation that we see, and the children, they are so thirsty. They're looking for water, and they're not finding any water to drink. It's very, very heartbreaking, okay? At this age, you know, we're 2023, and people are looking for water, and they cannot have water, and they cannot have a piece of bread to eat. It's very, very alarming. One thing that I want to note, and a lot of people here said really great things. America is a world leader, and we're trying to spread democracy across the globe and peace. We should really do what we say, you know, that we, you know, those are our values, and we should really do these things. Being biased to a very extremist government in the Middle East is very bad. And I don't see, I don't see how we can spread democracy and have people trust us to be, you know, trying to have peace across, you know, these countries. So if we want to be a peacemaker, we need to be unbiased. We need to look at both sides and make sure that whatever we come up with is suitable for both sides. You know, a human life is a very sacred thing. We need to protect it. And we need to make sure that people are, you know, enjoying, you know, basic human rights. And my concern here is not only Gaza and the ceasefire. My aunt is in Jenin, it's in West Bank, and she's going through a very tough time. You know, they go, I mean, the army and they go and, you know, break into houses, get everybody down and naked in front of their families, and they do crazy things, and then they let them go. I mean, what kind of life is this? I mean, seriously, how can we continue in this? I mean, and this is not new. This has been going on for 75 years, since they established, and this is how Israel was established, by killing and, you know, displacing people. So we really need to stop that. We need to have, you know, as a country, as a world leader, we need to be unbiased, and we need to come up with a solution that is fair for both sides. I don't say that Jews should not be there. We definitely want the Jews there. They need to enjoy their rights and, you know, go to their sacred places. We need to have Christians also enjoy their, you know, churches and, you know, live there. We need to have the Muslims as well. So everybody is welcome. This is not a place for just one, you know, religion. This is for all.
Thank you, TK. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Caitlin Parks.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Caitlin. Go ahead.
So I'm a resident of Canton. I've lived here on and off since starting high school. So when I was 14, I moved here from Lansing a few years ago after going to MSU, and I really missed having community from that. And I wondered what I really feel community here in Canton, because it was my hometown, and it's different than, you know, being in a big city. But I've been teaching in PCCS schools, well, just as a substitute teacher, and that experience has led me to feel that I really am a part of this community. So moving here from Texas at 14 introduced me to cultures and religions I probably wouldn't have known as much about living there. I'm really thankful for the experience to learn about Muslims, befriend them, work alongside them, and be taught by them. I'm very disappointed remembering the scare tactics I was taught growing up. I was about eight years old on 9/11, and everything that happened after, it kind of defined the way that I thought for many years until I reeducated myself. While not all Palestinians are Muslim, a large majority are, and the framing of this current conflict as a religious war uses religion as a tool to justify genocide. Calling any criticism of Israel antisemitic is gaslighting by governments that intend to let this conflict continue to reap natural resources. There's an irony in the fact that we spring into action for Ukraine, but for a majority Muslim already oppressed country or group, we give empty words while simultaneously aiding and funding the nation killing them. When I work with children, I think of how some of them, if they had simply been born in another place, it would be a death sentence. Why are we so comfortable in our convenient ways of American life that discussing a genocide is frowned upon? We must declare a ceasefire and show that we are one of many communities across the United States that will not stand for the atrocities committed by Israel. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have Shadia Kasim. Shadia, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Shadia. I am, I'm sorry, I'm a Lebanese-American. I'm married to a Yemeni-American man. We have four kids together, and about a year ago, we moved to Canton. I've lived in Dearborn my entire life. We moved here because of the diversity and the safety of the community. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person today. I actually, my 10-month-old is sick, and he had a high fever. And I actually was fortunate enough to be able to take him to an urgent care and just focus on keeping him hydrated and giving him medications to keep him feeling good. So, you know, I say that I'm fortunate for that is because in Gaza right now, they don't have these resources, and it's just, it's disheartening what's going on. have these resources, and it's just, it's disheartening what's going on over there. But I do want to thank you for the proposed resolution, and as like a new person in Canton, I am so in love with our community right now, especially being part of this meeting tonight. So aside from the fact that I want to express my support for the resolution, for the ceasefire, and of course, you know, as so many people before have told you guys different statistics and, you know, different history of what has gone on in Palestine, I would hope to consider rewriting it, just to have the language right to reflect, you know, the gruesome reality of what's been going on there for the past 75 years. And the only thing I'll end with is just that I'm not somebody who scares easily, and I'm not somebody who's overtly nervous, but the other day, I was walking, and I have, like I said, four kids, two of them are under two. So I was taking a walk with two little guys, one of them was walking, one was in a stroller, and it started to get dark as it's getting dark kind of early, and I saw, like, from my peripheral, or my peripheral vision, a guy in his driveway, he was kind of coming close. He probably wasn't doing anything, and I felt myself get really nervous, like my fight-or-flight instinct was like DEFCON 5. And that was a different feeling for me, and I was like, oh, I'm actually afraid. I'm actually afraid because of what is going on overseas. So I want again to thank you and to thank everybody who has spoken out, you know, on this topic tonight. You guys are amazing and eloquent, and thank you so much for this proposal.
Thank you. Next, we have Deki. Deki Alexander. Go ahead, Deki.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Deki Alexander, and I am the current Board President of the Jewish Federation of Greater Ann Arbor, and I'm really honored at this opportunity to speak here this evening. So just we as leaders of the Jewish Federation of Greater Ann Arbor, a primary convenor for the Jewish community, would like to respond to tonight's resolution, which is calling for an end to the conflict in Gaza and Israel. As elected officials of any local government, including Canton, we expect that you will engage in statements and actions to ensure that all the people of a community are represented. It is clear you have made every effort to do so. We have long held the position that it is not the role, though, of a city or council or township or board to engage in foreign policy issues, particularly ones that foster division within its own community, but that does not appear to be the case tonight. Rather, we often believe the Board should be laser-focused on issues that directly impact our local municipality. For this reason, we did not reach out to any municipality to pass a resolution condemning the massacre on October 7th. In spite of calls to do so, to date, the Ann Arbor City Council has not passed any collective resolution on Israel-Gaza. Council is focused on issues over which they have jurisdiction, including helping community members feel safe and avoiding adding to the divisions between Jewish, Muslim, and Arab residents. Nipso Lani, two council members, did not speak to broad community input and put forth an offensive one-sided resolution. Members of the Jewish community and its allies expressed that the resolution made them feel erased and alienated by their own city. This community input led to it being rescinded. The resolution being considered by the Canton Township Trustees this evening is really fair and mostly sensitive to the concerns of citizens, it appears, on all sides. It appropriately condemns the attack that precipitated the recent violence and calls for ceasefire, which we support, and return of all hostages. We deeply appreciate Canton's commitment to combating antisemitism, Islamophobia, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry, supporting the people of both Israel and Palestine to live in peace and security, and affirming the right of people to engage in peaceful protests without intimidation or violence. That said, we do request one possible edit in the second-to-last paragraph of the resolution, where you affirm your commitment to combat antisemitism, Islamophobia, anti-Palestinian, and anti-Arab bigotry. We ask that you may consider, in addition to combating antisemitism, that you include anti-Israeli bigotry. The notion of other anti-Israel sentiment is also antisemitism is complicated, as people have said earlier, situational and debated in both academic and policy circles. Requesting addition of this specific wording, as we have had reports of individuals being harassed and denied service in Canton because they are Israeli. We cannot fix the world, but working together, we can create a safer and harmonious environment for all our citizens. Thank you so much for your effort. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have Ari. Let me put you on here. Ari?
Yeah, hi. Hi, my name is Ariad Johnson. I'm here as a Jew who has been involved in organizing for Palestinian justice my whole adult life. As someone who is sick of hearing racist and genocidal rhetoric spewed in our name, who watches every day as more and more people are being murdered in a genocide that is reminiscent of my own people's suffering at the hands of Nazi Germany. Canton is a small township, but it has a lot of power. By promoting a ceasefire, the township asks its residents to consider the horrible injustices inflicted upon Gaza. In calling for an end to this genocide, we are effectively pushing back against the notion that Canton stands for racist, anti-Palestinian values and settler colonialism. Though calling for a ceasefire doesn't directly advocate for reducing aid to Israel and its military, it takes steps towards acknowledging Israeli actions as violent, racist, and genocidal. It acknowledges how our tax dollars are used to fund them. Hopefully, in turn, this will lead residents to reevaluate where they spend their money and how their city wastes our tax dollars on violent and racist settler colonialist projects instead of the citizens of Canton. I believe the resolution needs to be amended with the assistance of Palestinian voices due to issues surrounding language, as other people have mentioned tonight. Still, I beg the Council of Canton to promote a ceasefire now, at the very least. It is only the first step in changing the framework of Michigan's engagement with this apartheid state, but it is a dire and time-sensitive action in the face of a horrendous number of civilian casualties, which has now exceeded the amount killed in all wars in the 20th century. Citizens have little control over how our dollars are spent. We have no option other than making as much noise as possible and begging our representatives to listen to us. Seeing how many people have come here before you to ask for this motion, the Council shouldn't even have a choice but to echo, to be the echo of our pleas. Listen to your constituents and end the violence. You have power. As a Jew, unfortunately, I am sometimes given a louder voice than many Palestinians and other Arab communities who are silenced and dismissed by racist claims of antisemitism and violence. There will never be peace without justice, and justice means ceasefire and the return of the Palestinian land to those it belongs to. Thank you.
So we have, I think, Amina on panels, but I don't think, Amina, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand, otherwise. Nope. Oh, okay, I do have one more. Ahmed G. Ahmed G., go ahead.
Yes, hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you all for your time. I have been a resident here in Canton for about 13 years now, and I currently work as a civil engineer here locally in Canton. I was born and raised in Michigan, and both my parents were born and raised in the West Bank of Palestine, until they moved to Michigan in the 90s. And I just want to keep it short and focus on a main point to give everyone else time. But if Israel's true mission was to eradicate Hamas, they would carry out a special ops mission, locate them, and minimize civilian casualties, which they have all the technologies and resources to do so. But as we've seen, they have been carpet bombing entire regions, religious buildings, schools, hospitals, residential buildings, and the civilians trying to flee to a so-called "safe" place that also got bombed. This is clear ethnic cleansing and genocide that's happening. And I would also like to add to the resolution to know that this did not start on the 7th, but over 70 years of occupation and eradication of the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another one added, Saieda. Actually, no, it turned into a phone number. 313-522-7519? Is that Saieda? Or there's a 313 number? Is that you? Ahmed just spoke. Okay, anyone, let me see, let me check one more. Okay, try one more time. Okay, Saieda, please go ahead and talk. Lower your hand, okay. Oh, we have Mohammed. Mohammed, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. So my name is Mohammed. I lived in Michigan, been a Michigander for a while, but I chose my final destination for Canton about three years ago. We bought a house here as a family. As a past civilian of the US Army, served for about five years. I lived in many areas, but as I have been in Canton, I have seen this to be a very blessed place, a very diverse place, and I have no complaints whatsoever. So first of all, I want to thank all of you, thank the Board, for allowing our representation today. Don't want to get into too many details, as a lot of it was already covered, and I believe all of us are waiting to be with our families. So just a few words that I want to say is that, you know, life is precious, be it mine, be it yours, or anyone on the globe. As we are the United States of America, we are united as a body, we are united as a soul, and we are united as a people and as a community. Be it Palestine or Valentine, it is important. We love each other for the purpose of humanity. We have adults, we have teens, we have kids, we have babies, we have families, we have relatives, all without basic necessities of life that many of us here today in this meeting do not even think twice for. Be a Jew, a Christian, a Muslim, a Hindu, any religion, before religion, we are human first, and this is what this purpose is for. Without being a human, there is no light of religion. The fact that this Board has given the opportunity, that I deeply want to thank you all for your time today, where you chose to be with us and listen while your families wait patiently for you at home, so I would like to commend you for taking the courage and for taking the step first to passing the ceasefire resolution. Thank you so much.
Okay, let me check one more time. Pressing too many buttons. Okay, anyone online? Check you one more time. One, one more time, one more time, three times. Okay, we have one just popped up. Okay. Sufian, go ahead. Sufian?
Yes, hi. My name is Sufian Nebhan. I'm resident of Canton. Actually, I'm very sad I couldn't be with you today. I'm on a business trip in DC, but I wanted to call and voice my support to this resolution. It is very important, and it is the least we can do. I mean, ethnic cleansing, killing babies, mothers, I mean, you heard it all. The least we can do is just to listen to the community and do a ceasefire. So please, vote on it today, pass it today, no delay, ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more time. Anyone else online? Anyone else online? No one else online? Okay, thank you. So that ends public comment on agenda items only. Okay, we'll go back to the board packet. The next item is reading of the resolution by Trustee Bruninsky.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Resolution of Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, Michigan. Resolution calling for an end to the conflict in Gaza and Israel, whereas on October 7th, 2023, Hamas launched an unprecedented attack against Israel, taking hostages and resulting in the deaths of Israelis, whereas the cabinet of Israel subsequently formally declared war against Hamas. Whereas outside of the brief humanitarian ceasefire, Gaza has been largely cut off from humanitarian aid, and according to the United Nations Human Rights Council, the Palestinians have been internally displaced without safe drinking water, food, fuel, electricity, and medical care, which has created a humanitarian disaster. Whereas the war against Hamas has destroyed much of the civilian infrastructure within Gaza, including hospitals, and resulted in the deaths of Palestinians, mostly women and children. Whereas continued escalation could result in a larger regional conflict with devastating consequences. Whereas all sovereign nations must comply with international humanitarian law, regardless of geographic context. Whereas all acts of violence aimed at Palestinian and Israeli civilians should be condemned, and the loss of all civilian lives should be mourned. And whereas a lasting resolution can only be achieved by peaceful means and diplomacy, now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton calls for a return to an immediate, durable, and sustained ceasefire in order to protect and save human lives throughout the region, which would allow for humanitarian aid and the unhindered provision of goods to civilians in need, and the unconditional release of all civilians who are being illegally held hostage, demanding humane treatment in compliance with international law. Further resolved, the Canton Township Clerk's Office will provide a copy of this resolution to Canton's delegation in the Michigan Legislature and the United States Congressional delegation, which represents Canton Township. Further resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton affirms its commitment to combat antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry, its support for the people of both Israel and Palestine to live in peace and security, and the right of all people here and abroad to live, learn, work, play, pray, and engage in peaceful protest, all without threats, intimidation, or death. Additionally, the Board affirms that all people deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. And finally resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton affirms our collective duty to lead in our community with the values of peace, justice, and compassion. The Board reminds the community of our goal of being a welcoming community, as hate has no home here, and that in 2014, the Canton Township Equal Rights Ordinance was passed and then updated in 2022 to ensure each and every resident of our township have the same benefits of safety and nondiscrimination as anyone else.
Motion made by Trustee Bruninsky, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Any discussion or comments from the Board?
Hi, we get to talk now. So first of all, I want to thank you all for your input. Number one, it's great to see democracy at work in our country. You're all beautiful sitting out there, and I loved hearing from you. It's actually kind of weird sitting up here, because all of us, at least that I know on this Board, are activists too, and we're elected as such. So it's kind of weird that now we get this directed at us, right? When, if we weren't sitting here, we'd be sitting there, right? So. But at the same time, I know it's important that you're really directing it at the community and the world, right? So I just wanted you to know that, and I wanted you to know that you're heard. It's amazing how something half a world away, and in a region that has been in conflict for decades and centuries, can reach our hometown here. It really is a small world. We all want an end to the conflict in killing and destruction, and that's why I'll be supporting the motion, and I'm happy to approve it. I want to... I want to show the support from our community personally, I know others will want to speak. Most powerful to me still is what our board controls, which were the last two paragraphs there, right? I mean, what's important to me is everybody feels safe here. I encourage you to come to more of these meetings, or watch them on TV, or YouTube, or, because a few of us, we said the same a month ago, when it broke out, within our comments, that what's important is that we know, that our community members know that we all have equal rights in this community, everybody's treated the same, and everybody should feel safe in our community. So I don't want to, I mean, it's been a long night, right? And I don't think any of us will be able to address everything that's been said. But I do, I want to offer to come and meet with you, whether it's in a mosque or other place, and discuss things. Because I am a Jewish American. And I've, I've lived my life on a balance beam between two communities that I care about. I have a lot of friends in this room, right, that are sitting amongst you tonight. And in the last 20 years, I've built up those friendships, and I care about those people in our, in our community. And I, I think, I feel that they care about me too. Many of them have reached out to me, I've reached out to them, knowing that this was going to be a tough time in our community, right? So, since you're from the Muslim side of my life, I want to tell you how I talk to the Jewish side of my life. I have family and friends, just like you do, that I grew up with. And grew up learning stories and learning history. By the way, I hate history. I'm not a good history student. And the past few months have made me a history student, much to my chagrin, because it's not something I have ever found of interest. But I think it's important for us to all know history. And with that said, when I talk to my friends and family, because I hear the same words from them as I hear from you. And my heart breaks whenever I hear anybody talk about pain and suffering, right? And I tell them what I hear from you. And that I have to, I try to impress upon them that they need to learn the history of your people, right? They need to learn what got us here. They need to understand it, not just from what they were taught growing up, what I was taught growing up. I should say that living here, I've been in your mosque dozens of times, more times than I've been in a synagogue in the last 20 years. And Hindu temples and se戚gudharas. And I love it, it's beautiful. And even before this conflict, I've tried to impress upon the people of my community that I grew up in that I don't believe in the actions being taken by the current Israeli government. Personally, I mean, like I said, we can talk and get together. I, I, similar to times in the US history that I haven't been able to support the actions taken by the US government, I tried, have tried over the years to impress upon them, to various, varying success. So with that said, like, like any good parent, I want to let you know that being another side of my family, I want to impress upon you the same. And know that there are people in the Jewish community and in the Israeli community that are suffering too. And some of you talked about it tonight, right? And some of you did say antisemit, uh, Zionism is not antisemitism and things like that. But I impress upon you to learn and take it upon yourselves to learn the history of the Jewish experience. Just, I've made learning your history a personal goal of mine. I'm not there yet, I don't know it well enough. But that, just becoming part of your, your community has been a part of that for me. My, so recently I moved my parents here, and in the last 10 years. And they have interacted with your community. And one of the most beautiful things I've seen is a friendship that has arisen from a young 20-year-old woman in your community and my 80-year-old mother, right? And recently, they celebrated her wedding, and it was very impressive on my mother. And I know the young woman in your community is, feels the same about her. And I just need, I feel we need to have more of that in our world. So I want you to think about what it means to be sitting up here. Where I came from, do you think I could have imagined sitting here when I was a young man, talking to you all? And I wanted you to think what it would take for you to do the same. And I'm hoping that you don't hate me for asking you to do that. Because, I mean, I don't hate you. And I feel, I, I feel like we have, in order, yes, it's perfectly natural. I mean, it's, it's, it's a weird experience, because we're all on social media. And I see my friends on both sides posting such similar memes and dialogue and things like that. And I'm like, why aren't these two group friends? They are probably some of the most oppressed people in the world. And from someone who has marched for Black Lives Matters, that's tough for me to say, but they, they are. And it's amazing how they're fighting so, you know? And so I don't have solutions, except to say that if we start, if we can start fighting each other's battles, then I think we can maybe start making that happen. And yes, it starts local, I don't have high hopes it's going to change anything in the next five years. I'm really dismayed that what's happened may set us back 20 years in the region. But by the same token, at least it's a start, and I'm pleased to support this resolution to make that start.
Please, Stephen. Thaya?
First, I want to, I want to thank everybody for coming, and we do hear your voice. I know someone made a comment that the gentleman that was a veteran, we would listen to them, and that's not him more than you, and that's not true. You all have a voice, so please remember that. As an elected official of Canton Township, we've all worked hard to become a welcoming, safe community. Hate is not welcomed. You belong here is. We've implemented programs to celebrate and educate residents regarding many different holidays, cultures, and cuisines. We've strengthened our equal rights ordinance, and we've worked closely with leaders, our police department, and our elected officials at the county, state, and federal level. I'm proud to say we are a safe and welcoming community, and you all have helped work with us on that. We are elected by the people of Canton Township, and with that, we make policies for Canton Township. We can encourage and will encourage the county, the state, and federal government to work with, at their level, for solutions that include safe and peaceful means for all citizens. And with that, with the statement, I do support this resolution.
Summer.
I want to start by saying thank you to everyone who showed up here to speak tonight. Thank you to those who are online, waiting patiently, and those of you who sent dozens of emails to us over the last couple of days. I want to thank you for your call, for your support of our call for a ceasefire. But most importantly, I want to thank you for sharing your stories. Those stories I will take with me for a very long time. I know that everyone on this board is heartbroken by what we've heard tonight and what we've seen on our TV screens over the last few months. I think witnessing those images and hearing about the humanitarian crisis, the numbers of people being indiscriminately killed, is the impetus for some of us wanting to call out for peace and to call for a ceasefire. Each one of us on this board has powers, has power as individuals. We have relationships with elected officials at all levels of government. We have relationships with organizations and with community members. But collectively, as the ninth largest community in this state, we have an immense level of power when we speak with one voice. That is significant, it is strong, it's important, and it's influential. As a board, we've never collectively spoken out about an international issue. But since I've been on this board, we've spoken out in favor of a welcoming community, against systemic racism, and strengthened our human rights ordinance to ensure that people in this community can live free of discrimination. But we can't say that we are in favor of justice here at home when we are silent when there's injustice abroad. Especially when that injustice impacts so many members of our community. I also want to thank you for your criticism and critique, and for calling us in and doing so in a loving and productive way. Your voice on these issues that you've raised are very important, and as your elected leaders, we need to listen. And to you, the young woman who spoke earlier about the need to listen to the youth, I heard you. And the need to, when we are working on an issue that impacts a community, to make sure that we are bringing that community in. As someone who has organized on civil rights issues my entire career, I hear you and I agree with you. And as elected officials, we can all do better when it comes to that. I don't make this decision lightly, but it's important for me to say tonight that I do want a ceasefire. I want the killing to stop. I want people to be treated as humanely as possible. And so I will vote yes on this resolution tonight. And I will do so with the knowledge that this work does not end tonight after this vote. As I said, we all have power. We all have relationships, and we need to carry your messages and your voice that you have shared with us tonight to the people that have power to do something to stop this. And that is my pledge to do that. I, it is our responsibility as elected leaders in a representative democracy to represent your voice, and I'm so privileged to be able to do that.
First of all, I want to say that I am speaking from a place of privilege. And I have heard, today I have heard so many stories. And this was my place today to listen to all of you, and my heart is broken. I hear so many personal stories here today. And I have heard from so many people on the emails, I've spoken to so many members in the community in the past few months, and I have, I have consoled some of my friends. So let me start off with that. And today, you know, I, I see so many of my friends here, and I see so many of my friends that spoke up today. That's my friend Zara, my friend Zuman, my friend Haseena that spoke up today. And I just want to say that my heart goes out to all the Palestinians in the room and in Palestine, the Gazans in the room and in Palestine. And my heart also goes out to everyone who has lost family members, who are, who sometimes don't know where their family members are. I see some of my, so many of my dear friends here that I have known for so many years come today and speak on behalf of the community. And I hear you, I listen to you, and I want to learn from you. And I know the resolution is not perfect, and you have criticized it, and I acknowledge your criticism, and I'm willing to learn from this. And I would like to work with you and have conversations with you in the future on this. I'm an immigrant in the community who has raised their children in this community, as you saw, my daughter spoke today. I understand that I can and always go back to, to spend time with my family, and some of you cannot. And I understand that is my privilege, and some of you don't have that privilege. I have heard your critique, and I take that personal, you know, for me, for personally, to learn and understand your voices. And I also understand this conflict did not start on October 7th. I have friends, I have friends in college that are, that are from Palestine, which, who I keep in touch with. And I have spoken to them recently, have connected to them recently. And I understand their struggles that they are having. And though they still don't live, live in Palestine anymore, their family does. And I understand their struggles too. So I strongly urge, and you know, I will definitely vote yes on the resolution. I strongly urge our congressional leaders to call for a sustained ceasefire, an unconditional ceasefire, so that, I also call upon our president for an unconditional ceasefire, so that humanitarian needs can be met. Some of you mentioned today that come November, we will remember. So as an elected official, it is not the politics of the moment. But as a human being, I call for an unconditional ceasefire and humanitarian aid for people in Gaza, and they have access to food and water, shelter and medical aid, but also have the freedom that we enjoy in this country that we call the land of the free. Thank you.
So first, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight. I also appreciate that my colleagues' comments up to this point as well. I want to express my gratitude specifically to Palestinian Americans who were able to fill in a substantial amount of the details that I think needed to be said. I hear the criticism, I hear it loudly, and I also appreciate, I also appreciate that as well. So I'm grateful for those comments tonight. I am, for two months, I have felt an enormous amount of guilt and the need to do something. I have seen my friends in the Muslim community suppress their joy out of a feelings of guilt for what that meant for the loss that their friends and relatives had experienced, and that is a huge burden to carry. Not mine, theirs. I did not prepare words tonight, I'm, I'm very emotional. In particular, I, I know a substantial amount of the people who spoke at public comment by, on a first-name basis, as a lot of my colleagues do. One of the speakers today I saw admire a week ago. And as I was walking down with my children in the cart, they acknowledged my son by name, you know, because we were friends on social media, they know my son's name. And that level of intimacy and community, I have not experienced it in many other places. When my wife and I were first engaged, we were looking, we were living in the city of Plymouth, and we loved the walkability of the city of Plymouth, it's, it's a lovely community. It is 95, 95% white and predominantly Christian. And it is so easy in this world, when we see us, to see people who look like us, who talk like us, who worship like us, who speak, you know. We intentionally chose Canton because as I raise those children and prepare them into adulthood, I want them to look out and see us. To see the collective humanity in. adulthood, I want them to look out and see us, to see the collective humanity in every single person they meet regardless of those details. And so much of the narrative we hear is a competition for who matters, for whose life matters, for whose story matters. And so I appreciate the importance of words. I am here tonight to vote for a ceasefire. And I'm trying to bring two children into this world to acknowledge that every single person matters and to recognize the humanity of everybody. And I'm done talking. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kate.
Sorry, it's been a week or longer for us. I want to wish peace to everyone who is here with us tonight. I thank you all for joining us and for bringing your voices here. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge the pain and the sorrow in the room. I just have a few moments of silence. I feel great sorrow for the families who have lost loved ones and for the hostages who are still in captivity. We do not forget, and one child killed is too many. I want to thank my fellow board members for their thoughtful consideration of this resolution. We've had many, many one-on-one conversations. The resolution went through many iterations, and it is different from where we started. Is it perfect? No. Is it exactly the words I would have chosen? Probably not, nor does it include everything I would have included. And I welcome meeting with you all in person, many of you I do know already, and call friends, and I hope to meet new friends tonight and in the future. And I hope to learn from you all, and I think we can learn from each other. There are over seventeen municipalities in the U.S. whose governing bodies have called, have now passed ceasefire resolutions. If we pass this resolution tonight, I think we'll be the first township to do so. And I know that I can speak for all of us tonight up here on the, at the board table that we all want peace and an end to the bloodshed and the devastation that's taking place in Gaza right now. We all stand for peace and against human suffering and against any type of genocide. Human lives are precious. It doesn't matter who you are, where you were born, what religion you follow or don't follow. We are all humans and part of this precious planet. While we may not all agree that what we are doing here tonight is enough, or is, or has the best words, or whether we should even do this, I feel comfortable that should this pass, that we as a board at least did something and spoke out against human suffering and killing. I can live with this imperfect resolution, and I will vote for it, because calling for a ceasefire and asking for killing and devastation to stop is something we can do. And I hope that we can all be good to each other. From the Oslo Declaration on Peace, I want to leave you with this quote. Peace is more than just the absence of war. Peace requires respect for the worth and dignity of our fellow human beings, tolerance among individuals, and harmony within each person. It also requires global justice in place of global inequities, not least the elimination of hunger and thirst in a world that produces plenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't we have a great board? I'm sorry, they all speak so well. I don't even want to speak after all of this because you guys are so great. One of the things I heard tonight was Canton is beautiful because of its people, and I really, truly believe that. I've lived here almost thirty years. I mean, some of us in this room have worked on interfaith and cultural relationships for twenty years, and I've called you friends, those of you who are here and online. Working to make a stronger community for all has been a priority for myself and many others, including this board under welcoming community. What we can offer here are just words, but the hope in considering this resolution is to bring Canton residents affected by the conflict together in humanitarian support for people in Israel and Palestine. I grew up in a family that, I have relatives in Belfast, so I visited Belfast many times, and I experienced a, a community that was taken over, colonized, as some of you have said. And I even had a gun held to my head because I accidentally walked in the wrong neighborhood. So living like that, I don't know how my family did that or does that. It is a fearful experience, and I heard a lot of that in some of the stories that you told. But Canton is a richly diverse community with people living here from all over the world. So we hope, what we can do in Canton, that everyone can see their neighbors' face in their own, no matter what their color, religion, gender, and work to bring peace and justice to all who suffer under tyranny and oppression and understand each other. So when you look at your neighbors and you see yourself, see each other. That's important. I think you've heard that in some of the board's words and some of your words. But our promise to all Canton residents is to keep a safe and welcoming environment. That's what we can do, and we have a great, a great staff here and people and residents that can help do that. So with that, I'd like to call a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now you can all stay. We're going to be here another two hours going through the business stuff, but... All right, if, I'll give, you'd like to leave, but we will be here a little bit longer. We will go quickly, I promise. We'll be out of here in fifteen minutes. All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider a word of a contract to Berkshire Development for the demolition of a dangerous building at 1-822 Sheldon Road North. Item C2, consider approval of a 2023 budget, of the 2023 budget adjustments. C3, request authorization to pay bills in 2024 when no regular board meeting is scheduled. C4, consider payment of City View annual software maintenance fees. C5, consider renewal of Civic Plus website hosting services and Civic Optimize. C6, consider 2024 meeting dates for the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage. C7, consider approval of a purchase order increase for Romulus Aquatic Center.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The administration building has two five horsepower sump pumps that consistently operate to remove all groundwater from the building. Oh, oh my gosh. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider approval of a purchase order to Kennedy Industries for removal and replacement of two sump pumps at the administration building.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract budget adjustment, wait, the contract, comma, budget amendment, and approve a purchase order to Kennedy Industries Incorporated at PO9, Post Office Box 930079, Wixom, Michigan 48393, in the amount of $102,230.17, which includes the ten percent contingency of $9,293 for the removal and replacement of two sump pumps at the administration building.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The admin building has two five horsepower sump pumps that consistently operate to remove all groundwater from the building. The approximate age of each sump pump is twenty years with the average lifespan of ten, fifteen years. For the last two years, the pumps have experienced failures that resulted in the pumps tripping off. Director Norwood, would you like to add to that?
I do not have anything else to add, but John Salinas is here from Facilities Division to answer any questions.
John, would you like to add anything?
Not at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, board questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval of headcount increase for Municipal Services Department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the increase in headcount for the Municipal Services Department Engineering Division by one continuing part-time employee and the related 2024 budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Municipal Service is one of the largest departments. It encompasses building, engineering, planning, public works. It's such a department has a wide range of clerical needs, all of which support the various divisions within the department, ensure the needs of the community are met. To effectively and efficiently continue to meet the needs of residents and businesses within the township, an additional continuing part-time clerical position is being requested. If approved, the primary location, the continuing part-time clerk will be in Engineering Division. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Nothing, nothing else to add. We're very excited to have her in Engineering, so.
Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider a word of CDBG housing rehab contract.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the housing rehabilitation contract to Decima LLC listed below totaling $24,989. We are also requesting a reimbursement of all of the permit fees once the work has been completed and approved by the building department.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Under Canton's affordable housing program, federal dollars are used to pay for major and minor repairs to owner-occupied, single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed, and the public bid opening was on November 9th, 2023, the CDBG housing rehab program. One bid was received. We are requesting to approve a contract for the HUD CDBG funded home rehab project that exceeds a $10,000 purchasing threshold. Wendy's not here. Let's see, any questions or comments from the board?
It's just wonderful every time we're able to do this.
Great. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider additional contribution to OPEB pre-funding.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the additional OPEB funding to the MERS retiree healthcare, funding vehicle in the amount of $1.5 million for a total contribution of $2.5 million. In addition, I move to approve the above-mentioned budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. According to the most recent actuarial, actuarial, actuarial valuation from CBIZ Benefits and Insurance, the township's other post-employment benefits plan is approximately forty-three percent funded with an unfunded liability of approximately $38,200, oh, I'm sorry, $38,262,000. The township has made it a priority to address these legacy costs while also maintaining strong benefits for its current and future employees. The OPEB Fund 736 budgets annually a $1 million payment to pre-fund this outstanding liability. Based on preliminary reviews of the 2023 ending fiscal year balances in this fund, we have the resources to pre-fund an additional $1,500,000 towards OPEB plan for a combined total payment of $2,500,000. With this additional funding, the plan's funding level will increase to approximately forty-seven percent based on the 2022 valuation. I see Wendy is online. Director Trumbull, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Michael?
I won't make a question. I will just express my gratitude to the Finance Division, Director Trumbull, this board, the previous boards. I remember what the outstanding obligation of both pension and OPEB were a decade ago, and where we're at today, it's night and day. So I think that shows discipline, and I like the direction. I think it's a great commitment from this board that we want to address this. So, support.
Summer?
Just to add to that, it is great that we are able to do this, and as Michael said, the fiscal discipline to be able to make it happen, but we didn't do it at the expense of planning for the future, and I appreciate that we were intentional about that.
Kate?
Just, I echo exactly everything that my board colleagues just said.
Steven?
A question, but don't need an answer right away. Still supporting it, of course, for all the reasons stated, is in our efforts the last ten years to do this, have we, has the percentage lowered at any time since we've been adding and extra adding? I ask just be, for the public to be aware of the rising costs, I know they're aware of, but how the rising costs of healthcare just make this almost an impossible mission to ever get to the point where we'll feel comfortable that we're funded enough. So Director Trumbull, if, you know, if you can send an email or something, just let us know what the last ten-year funding has looked like.
Yeah, I would be happy to. I was trying to pull up the 2014 valuation while you were asking the question, and I just, I couldn't get it fast enough. But I believe, you know, when I started, the outstanding liability was somewhere, I think we had like $6 million maybe set aside, and that is the case. I just, I just looked at it. We had about $6 million set aside ten years ago, and now we're, you know, we're forty-seven percent funded. I think we have, I'd have to give you the numbers, I will give it to you, but I believe our percentage funded was like ten percent or something like that, something very minor. And now we're, you know, all the way up to forty-seven percent, and with the added million dollars that the board has been setting aside and is planning to continue to set aside, we should be at a hundred percent funded according to our actuary in the next ten years, which is great news because that means we can begin using this fund for our retiree healthcare at that point in time and taking those costs away out of the general fund, the police fund and fire fund, which will really alleviate a lot of costs for those funds. So, so we're really making some really good progress on, on the OPEB fund.
Okay, thank you. When I leave...
But I'll, I'll get the summary together for you guys and send it out.
When I leave this board, remind me to get hired by the township. I'm going to need that, those benefits.
Tanya?
Yeah, I also had the same question, Wendy, but, you know, this is great that we are doing this, and, you know, we are setting aside and we are taking care of our legacy costs and trying to fund this as much as we can. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, so go ahead, Wendy.
Nope, nope, I said thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G5, consider approving the purchase of the 2024 Motorola Dispatch Radio Equipment Service Agreement Renewal.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of the 2024 Motorola Dispatch Radio Equipment Service Agreement Renewal in the amount of $40,167.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to purchase a service agreement renewal with Motorola Solutions for coverage of the 800 megahertz, megahertz Motorola Dispatch radio and console components for 2024. This functionality of this critical equipment deems it necessary to rely on 24/7 responsive coverage for service calls, repairs, and replacement of hardware to keep the dispatch and call center operating at peak performance. Director Bowden, do you want to add anything?
I do not.
Comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G6, consider request to approve a letter of agreement between Canton Township and the IAFF Local 2289.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve, I move that we approve the letter of agreement between Canton Township and the IAFF Local 2289 to recognize how the conversion of leave time and future earn rate shall be converted upon transfer between administration slash prevention and suppression.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Canton Township is always striving for good rapport with its labor force. Toward this end, a letter of agreement was reached between Canton Township and the IAFF Local 2289, which is our fire department, to organize how the conversion of leave time and future can earn rate shall be converted upon transfer between administration, prevention, and depression. The LOA will be retroactive to March 7th, 2022. Jamie, would you like to comment on that?
No real comment, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Great. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider a word of contract and issue a purchase order to GHD for submission of the LOMC to FEMA for fire station number two.
Madam Supervisor, I move to issue a purchase order to GHD in the amount of $45,850 for tasks one through three as described in their proposal and above-related budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Fire Department is requesting to issue a purchase order to GHD for prep and submission of a letter of map change to the FEMA on behalf of Canton Township for the new fire station number two. Jamie, do you have anything to add?
No, not, not at this time, but I will take questions, or Director Norwood could also answer questions on this as well.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, approval of resolution setting full-time elected official salary rates to follow merit system scale.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, setting full-time elected official salary rates to follow merit system scale, whereas elected officials in Canton serve as department heads or supervisor of all department heads, whereas all department heads in Canton are compensated at grade thirteen level on the merit system scale, whereas elected officials' compensation has been determined separately from merit positions, which has historically created a large gap in compensation between classified and non-classified positions, whereas the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks... recently sent a communication asking jurisdictions to acknowledge the increased professionalism and workload requirements for appointed and elected clerks in Michigan and setting their compensation in line with other department heads. And finally, whereas salaries for full-time elected officials in neighboring communities have increased substantially larger than in Canton, while population taxable value and public services are exceptionally larger in Canton, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charge of Township of Canton rectifies this inconsistency by ensuring fidelity to a compensation regime between classified and unclassified positions for the resolve that the positions of clerk, treasurer and treasurer shall start at a compensation level consistent with merit grade 13, step 1, an increase annually in line with the step increases approved for grade 13. Further resolve that the position of supervisor shall start at a compensation level consistent with a merit grade 13, step 4, an increase annually in line with the step increases approved for grade 13. And finally, resolve that the positions of clerk and treasurer shall start 2024 at a compensation level consistent with merit grade 13, step 1, while supervisor shall start 2024 at a compensation level consistent with merit grade 13, step 4. This does not prohibit the board from approving any additional annual increases in line with other merit employee increases.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Snyderman. Elected officials in Canton serve as department heads or supervisor of all department heads. Hollow over the salary has been determined separately from those that they supervise and manage. Committee as large as Canton requires a compensation system that acknowledges professional requirements of each department and position, and Canton a department head rate of pay is set at grade 13 on the merit scale for all classified employees. Is recommended that full-time elected official pay for clerk and treasurer be set upon election as department heads, grade 13, step 1, an increase incrementally with a non-union classified employee salary grade system annually. Is recommended that full-time elected official pay for supervisor be set as grade 13, step 4, an increase incrementally with a non-union classified employee salary grade system annually. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just would point out that this came forward, and if you look at the presenter, it is myself, Michael Seeger, from the clerk's office, not the supervisor's office. This is in line with two kind of key things. One, the substantial change to election official duties as a result of the voter-initiated petition or change to the Constitution in 2022, drastically altered the fundamental rule of the clerk's office, the amount of work associated with it, and then in 2024, the fact that we have five elections. So the resolution has been, or I'm sorry, there's an attached communication from the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks discussing the importance of tying in both elected and appointed officials' salaries in line with department heads for all communities across the state of Michigan, and the Secretary of State is currently working on a communication in support of that endeavor, and they will be sending that out to all of the, I believe, 1,520 jurisdictions in Michigan. They will be asking a number of communities who have part-time clerks to have them be converted to full-time clerks in order to meet that demand, but this is consistent with what we have here in Canton. It's also, you know, the resolution kind of speaks for itself, so I'm comfortable answering any questions, but I will again reiterate that this did come out of my office.
Questions or comments? Treasurer Slavens?
You know, with all due respect for my colleagues, salary study was one of the items that we have been talking about doing. Merit positions have been reevaluated in 2002, and with the changes in technology and everything, we knew it was important to do a salary study. I know the committee's working on the project and it's supposed to be done by spring, and so I personally feel that we need to wait until the study's complete like all the merit employees are waiting for, so I will be a no on this vote.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Stephen?
Thank you, ma'am supervisor. Well, you all are due respect, so those words are well said, Madam Treasurer. I give you all the respect for the work that you do. And, you know, when I came here 11 years ago and I was educated on how things work, it did seem weird to me that the clerk, the supervisor, the treasurer and the clerk are all department heads, but they are not part of the merit scale or not part of the same scale as our wonderful department heads that serve the community and are part of that scale. I see how hard you guys work. I see the changes that you make. And the other thing is, I realized when we got information on it, that in the last seven years, and really if you go back to my time, starting on the board the last 11 years, the positions you're in have actually been compensated negatively over those years. And the last seven years have been given increases of no more than 1% of year. And people deserve to make a living, and I fully believe that. And people also should be recognized for doing a good job. And just because you've chosen to go in the career as elected officials doesn't mean that you should be required to give that up. So I think it's important that we make this change. I do think we should still do the study that, or that the merit commission, I'm sorry, on the merit scale that's being done and include the elected officials and the non-full-time elected officials. The world that has, prices have gone up in this world greatly, and everybody is feeling the pinch, and it's important that our community, me as a community member, tell our leaders of our community and those running the government that they're doing a good job, and one way to do that is to compensate them adequately. This changes very little, but it's an important change in my point of view, so I'll be in support of it.
Any questions? Tanya?
Yeah, I concur with what Stephen said, that, you know, it's as part of being an elected officials or full-time elected, we sometimes take a step back, sometimes they don't get, they choose, they have not gotten an increase with how the inflationary rises have been happening in the last few years. And I think the job descriptions have also changed with the change in technology, with the changes in rules that are happening and, you know, especially in the clerk's office. There's a lot of change because of proposal, the promote-the-vote proposal, so they have to take extra steps and they're, and our community is growing, so, you know, we have added responsibilities of the population of our community. Yeah, the merit, we are doing the merit study and, you know, we have a meeting set up coming Friday on where we go with that and reviewing the proposals that are coming in. But I want to go ahead with the merit study, but for now, I will support this proposal.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, I'm here, Treasurer Slavens, some concerns because we do have, we have a merit study that is, we've gotten bids back on and we're in a, we have a committee now and trustee, Tanya, you are a part of that, and I will wait for that study. I may agree with waiting that study, so. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion passes. Item G9, Consider Approval AE Services for Barchester Park CDBG Program to MCSA.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to award the architectural and engineering services of Barchester Park to MCSA Group Incorporated for a total amount of $21,412.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On November 28, 2023, Board of Trustees approved to award $234,000 CDBG funds to be used toward the purchase of design services, environmental review services and equipment to remove and install new playground equipment at Barchester Park. Canton Leisure Services currently holds a service contract with MCSA for playground design consulting and is a preferred consultant for these services. MCSA Group has assisted the township with numerous playground designs, providing dependable, professional and quality service. Therefore, Community Development is recommending awarding the architectural and engineering services to MCSA Group for a total amount of $21,412. MCSA Group has provided a timeline of the Barchester Park project with an anticipated completion date of spring 2024. Director LeFever, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I was just going to talk about what's happened here in the community since this park was built in 1997 over the last 26 years, so if you'll just bear with me for a few minutes, I'm, no, just kidding, I have nothing to add.
Denied. We already know. Okay, any comments or questions from the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I appreciate the humor.
G10, Consider New Appointments and New Appointment to Reappointments to the Planning Commission.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to appoint Clarence Lee Jr. to the Planning Commission for a term to expire 12/31/26, and to reappoint Doug Weber and Harpreet Saxdeva to the Planning Commission for terms to expire 12/31/26.
Just seeing if they're online, but they are not. So three planning commissioners have terms that will expire in December 31, 2023. Two of those commissioners, Harpreet Saxdeva and Doug Weber, are interested in continuing to serve. The third, Alan Anken, is retiring from the commission service. Yeah. Harpreet and Doug are being recommended for reappointment. Clarence Lee Jr., a current member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, is being recommended to replace Mr. Anken on the Planning Commission and also to act as the Planning Commission representative on the Planning Commission. Clarence also recently served on the Master Plan Advisory Board. Any questions or comments? Summer?
First, as the board representative for the Planning Commission, I would like to thank Alan Anken for his service. He has done an incredible job as Planning Commissioner over the last several years, and I am sad to see him leave, but he has served for a while and he's decided to step aside. I worked with Clarence Lee on the Master Plan Advisory Board. He is great, came with a lot of ideas, very dedicated to this community, and he's been a great member on the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I'm glad to see him be appointed as the representative to the Planning Commission that also serves on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And Doug and Harpreet have brought a lot to the Planning Commission as well, and so glad to see them being reappointed.
Thanks, Michael.
I was just going to congratulate Alan Anken and thank him for his service, and I hope he's also leaving his HOA board because he deserves peace and quiet. He's really served the community on so many different levels, so grateful for that and also excited. I don't know that I've met Mr. Lee yet, but also grateful to the two reappointments. They're fantastic members of the Planning Commission and trust what they bring to us and a lot of added value, so.
Thanks. Anyone else? Kate?
Yeah, as Summer said, Clarence is being recommended to be the Planning Commission representative on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I believe. Because in the executive summary, it said that, right, but it said Planning Commission representative on the Planning Commission, which, so just clarifying that, and I don't personally know Harpreet or Doug. I know they've done a good job on the Planning Commission, so I'm thankful that they're willing to continue there. And Clarence, I also served on the Master Plan Advisory Board with, and he was a dedicated and really dedicated member, and he brought a lot of questions, which was good because it led to a lot of good discussion.
Anyone else? Great. I know Alan's been out probably 10 years. He was on Planning Commission when I was, so he's been there a while. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G11, Consider Two Appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the Canton, I move to appoint Tarek Ramon from the alternate position to a full position on the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term to expire 12/31/26, and to appoint Clarence Lee Jr. to the Zoning Board of Appeals as the Planning Commission representative with a term concurrent with his term on the Planning Commission.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Berninski. A vacancy will be created in the Zoning Board of Appeals due to Alan Anken retiring from Planning Commission service at the end of his term on December 31, 2023. Alan has also served as a Planning Commission rep on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Clarence Lee Jr., a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for almost two years, is recommended for appointment to the Planning Commission to replace Mr. Anken, and is also recommended for appointment at the Planning Commission representative on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Tarek Ramon, who has served as ZBA alternate since November 2022, is being recommended to fill the vacancy as a regular member to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any questions from the board? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G12, Consider Appointments to the Historic District Commission.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the appointment of Ellen Thomas to the Canton Historic District Commission for a three-year term effective through December 13, 2026.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Due to resignation of Greg King, there is one opening on Historic District Commission. Ellen Thomas is being recommended to fill the vacancy. Ellen served as the employee liaison to the HGC in the past and has knowledge of HGC policies and processes. Any questions or comments?
I'll just make, I'll just make a quick comment. Having worked on the Board Interview Committee for Boards and Commissions for a few years, the HGC is always the hardest commission to find suitable applicants for because there are so many requirements for that position, and so Ellen seems like she would be a great choice and excited to move her forward.
Thank you. Diane?
And I just want to thank Greg King for his service. I appreciate all the years that he's put in.
Definitely, he's been like 30 years.
I want to dito Treasurer Slavens' comments. I don't think you, Canton's history, the story of Canton's history would be incomplete without the role that Greg King has played up to this point.
Very passionate. Tanya?
Yeah, I've met Greg multiple times as part of Cultural Commission, and he's a great, you know, with his background and his passion for being on the Historic Commission. He was, he was great, and I want to thank him for his service, and I also want to thank Summer and Kate for being on the interview board and spending time to know the candidates and, you know, making the excellent choices for our different boards and commissions.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G13, Consider Reappointments to the Canton Cares Fund Committee.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the reappointment of Tammy Hagerty and Christina Wilson to the Canton Cares Fund Committee for a three-year term to expire November 17, 2026.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Cares Committee is recommending the reappointment of Tammy Hagerty and Christina Wilson, whose current terms expire on 11/17/23. Tammy's been an active member since 2019 and currently holds the vice chair position of the committee. Christina has been an active member since the committee began in 2017, serving the first two years of her term as vice chair. Both members are very strong advocates of this committee, often securing vendors and sponsors for the two large fundraisers put on by the committee each year, as well as playing a lead role in organizing and volunteering their time to help run these two events. Tammy and Christina both hold a three-year commitment, which if reappointed, will expire on 11/17/26. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G14, Consider Approval of Conference Expense for Supervisor and Economic Development Manager.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the expense of $5,900 for the supervisor and economic development manager to attend the Mackinaw Policy Conference, May 28 through 31, 2024.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Township Supervisor and Economic Development Manager are interested in attending the Mackinaw Policy Conference, May 28 through 31, 2024. The cost to register is $2,095 per person. Canton's travel policy states that the board approval is required for all schooling, seminars, training or conferences, which cost in excess of $2,001 per individual. Any questions or comments? Michael?
I plan voting yes, but I'm also excited to amend the travel policy so that we don't need an RBA for a $5,900 expenditure in the future.
Deputy Treasurer, do you have anything to add on this one about the policy?
We are working, that sounded loud. We are working to amend the policy to make it more consistent with our purchasing policy.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G15, Consider Approval of Wage Increases for Merit Full-Time Non-Union Employees, Full-Time Elected and Appointed Officials and Part-Time Employees for the 2024 fiscal year.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a 3% across-the-board wage scale increase for merit employees, elected, appointed officials and part-time employees for the 2024 fiscal year, and to- year, and to approve a 3% one-time inflationary increase for merit employees, elected officials, and appointed officials.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. This RBA intends to address wage increases for merit employees, full-time elected and appointed officials, and part-time employees in 2024. At the Merit Commission meeting held in November 27th, the proposed 3% wage increase was recommended for approval by the Merit Commission. Additionally, a one-time inflationary increase of 3% was also proposed. Under ordinance 85, the wages and benefits of classified employees shall be recommended by the Merit Commission but shall not take effect until approved by the Township Board. The part-time wage scale underwent significant revision and modification in 2022. A substantial component of the modification was to ensure that part-time staff could be retained and inflationary adjustments were made to the scale at that time. Therefore, 3% increase is being proposed for part-time employees is consistent with the annual increase proposed for merit employees. So we have Rochelle Howe, who's been waiting patiently in the back of the room. Do you have any comments, Rochelle? Any questions or comments from the board? No? Stephen?
Uh, like my comments before, unprecedented times, unprecedented inflation we experienced over the prior couple of years, uh, not seen probably since the 1970s in some ways, or 80s. Um, I, I think, uh, this hopefully will go some part of the way to making that, uh, helpful to our employees. Uh, so I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Michael?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Human Resources Division, the Supervisor's Office, the entire leadership team, and the board. Um, this is like the final piece in the compensation puzzle for, for setting for 2024, um, with the exception of one outlier, Jamie, but that's okay. Um, I know we're working through that. I, I think what's really cool from a philosophical standpoint is that I think the journey started with the setting right, the fact that the, uh, probably lowest compensated position in the township, um, was addressed in the first contract with, um, when we looked at AFSP. And bringing folks, you know, the board had kind of thrown down the gauntlet in 2020 and really wanted to focus on, on some semblance of a livable wage. If you work for the township, you're a full-time employee, you should be, you should be able to, you know, you should be making a certain base level of wage. And, and the increase, you know, I think it was around just over $15 an hour at that time. To go to where it is today on that contract is a really a statement of the board's values, also the hard work of the Supervisor's Office and staff. Um, you know, and I think that's a great place to start and we worked our way, um, to, um, where we are today and, and, and we, you know, bringing those increases, um, through those contracts to really let the employees know that they are supported and that we understand the economic kind of realities of, of where we're at, um, to then finally get, you know, finally, um, the merit employees, um, which, which can tend to be the highest compensated individuals in the township, but getting them to a comparable raise as well. Uh, but, but starting at the bottom and then working our way to the top, I, I think is admirable. I think philosophically, um, I'm impressed and I, and I'm grateful and I'll be voting in favor of this increase. So, thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G 16, consider a request to approve service agreement between Canton Township and the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities.
Ma'am Supervisor, I would like to, uh, have the board entertain a motion to allow the clerk to recuse himself as I have expressed numerous times that I, while serving on the board of the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities, I have a conflict on any, um, contracts with that agency. If, um, somebody would make a motion, I would appreciate it and I'd leave my position if it passed.
Madam Supervisor, I move that we recuse Clerk Seeger from voting on item G 16, consider request to approve service agreement between Canton Township and the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G 16, can someone please read the motion?
I can read it. Um, I move that we approve the service agreement with the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities and to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement upon legal review. I further move to approve the budget amendment in the 2024, in 2024 included in the amount of $125,000 to accommodate this cost.
Support. Motion made by Trustee Foster, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Canton Township is committed to giving all of its residents the opportunity to experience the arts and humanities and supporting local businesses. Pursuant to this commitment, the township wishes to provide events, support, and foster the arts community in Canton Township by partnering with the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities. The service agreement with the partnership, which is for $225,000 annually, establishes roles, responsibility, cost sharing, and revenue sharing for events and activities in the township to grow the arts community. The service agreement will also support economic development in the township, particularly in Cherry Hill Village, where the partnership is located. The agreement will support economic development by bringing events, arts programming, and people into the village core on a regular basis, which will in turn support local businesses. The partnership will provide the Board of Trustees with an annual report each year. Furthermore, this agreement will make the partnership the de facto administrator and overseer of Cherry Hill Village with assistance from the township. In addition to the above-mentioned programs, events, and outreach, the partnership shall facilitate the following tasks and responsibilities: community murals, art installations, street and pedestrian improvements, stewardship, monitoring, and reporting to the township of infrastructure in the Canton Town Square and Cherry Hill Village broadly, neighborhood and street lighting. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Tanya?
Um, yeah, I have seen what the, uh, you know, uh, the Village Arts Factory, the different programming that they have done in the, in the, right now, um, in the last year, and I'm very excited on to what they bring next. Thanks to John and Kevin at the Arts Factory.
Okay. Anyone else? Stephen?
Uh, just quickly, I'll just say it was, this is really cool and it was a lot of fun to work on this actually, just to, um, make this happen. I think this is going to be great for our community, uh, for the partnership, for the businesses down there, and, uh, I look forward to seeing what comes out of it.
Anyone else? Yeah, there's been a lot of great programs happening and increasing and we can see that as these, this partnership is, flourishes and our residents sign up and they're there. And I think it's going to be a great thing for our community. All right. All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay. Do we have to do a motion to let Clerk Seeger back on?
Might not pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a no.
That's a no.
I move he comes back in February.
That's right. Item G 17, consider increase of a blanket purchase order for BSNA software for the Treasury Department.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a total blanket purchase, uh, to, purchase order to BSNA software, 14965 Abbey Lane, Bath, Michigan, 480, 48808, in the amount of $13,355 to be paid from the subject account for maintenance and repair software support.
Support.
Wrong button. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. At the January 24, 2023 meeting of the Township Board of Trustees, a blanket purchase order in the amount of $12,500 was approved for the software support for BSNA software. The Treasurer's Office is requesting to increase the blanket purchase order amount for software supports with BSNA software from $12,500 to $13,000, $13,355, an increase of $855. Treasurer Slavens, do you want to add anything?
Questions?
Any questions?
But I can answer any questions.
I know, these buttons. No? Any questions? All right. All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, great. That's the agenda. Um, is there any public comment? Public comment? No. I think we're good for the year. Let me look online. Any public comment? Public comment going once, public comment online twice, public comment three times. Okay. No public comment. Great. Anybody from staff? Anything coming up this weekend?
My colleagues wouldn't let me speak a minute ago. They're trying to keep us all short, but, uh, I just wanted to add, uh, Ann Conklin from the partnership was here earlier. She tried to stick it out. She wanted to let you all know how important it was to the partnership and how much they appreciate it, as do I, all the work done on the service agreement. So we're very excited for what that has to bring for all of us. But, um, wrapping up a couple of holiday events and kind of cruising into the holidays here. Uh, but we encourage people to continue visiting the parks and enjoying, uh, their time with family and come check out some lights. But, um, yeah, we're looking forward to all that 2024 brings.
Thank you. Greg?
I do have to say, we are very excited that Friday, the Aquatic Center at the Summit will be opening for lap swimming only. And then next Thursday, a week from, is that today at this point? No. A week from this Thursday, the, uh, the full pool with open swim and everything will be reopening. So very exciting.
Thanks. Anyone else? I know that if anyone's seen Chief Chad Bowes, been on TV like three times for some police efforts that have happened out there, want to kind of talk about what's going on?
Thank you. Yeah. Pretty, um, pretty outgoing. So those TV spots are real important to me. Um, but the, uh, but it's been real fortunate over the years, um, working with Oakland County and Wayne County and the AG's office, you know, putting forth partnerships like that allows us to have force multipliers and it helps us solve crime throughout the region. So there's a number of things that are going on and I'm more reluctant to provide case details on some of my cohorts, but I will, um, be happy to report when everyone's arrested and we have everyone, uh, safely secured for a while so they can go through the court process.
You have any more TV spots coming up this weekend?
I do not.
It was a good job. Everyone looks to Canton for help. All right. Any board comment? We'll start at the sun. Tanya?
Uh, wishing everyone a happy holiday. I think this is our last board meeting. We have a study session next week, so.
Just incredibly proud to serve on this board with all of you.
Thank you. Michael?
Uh, I would just reiterate or echo what Summer just said. Um, and, uh, not to single anybody out in particular, but, um, just extremely, uh, impressed and, and grateful for both the courage and, uh, the wisdom of Trustee Snyderman and what he shared today. When I grow up, I want to be like Stephen.
Thank you. I'm not sure about the growing up part, but.
Trustee Berninski?
So first of all, I wanted to thank our directors who have stuck with us this evening. Thank you. Um, and I would like to wish everyone happy holidays. I also, um, echo what Trustee Foster says. And, um, Stephen, I don't know if you know, but you moved several of us to tears this evening and, um,
There's tissues up here.
I'm really dreading when you leave because I'm going to be so sad. So I gotta stop thinking about that. Um, Michael, yeah, we all want you to be like Stephen when you grow up.
Michael, stay Michael.
Do I hear her support? Motion made by Trustee Berninski.
I'm done.
Uh, well, thank you all. I appreciate it. It's an honor to serve with all of you as well. I've enjoyed it. Uh, this isn't Michael goodbye speech, by the way. That'll come later. Another, another, you got me for another year. Um, I, I just want to thank Trustee Berninski for her leadership on the resolution. It was a lot of hard work listening to a lot of different people, both sitting up here and out in the community. Um, and, uh, and each and every one of you for your leadership. Um, and with that, I'm tired. I want to go home, so I'm going to shut up.
Diva wanted me to cut off half the agenda.
I still did.
Ditto to what my colleagues have all said. And Stephen, you're wonderful. Um, and happy holidays to everybody and take your family out for a wonderful walk at the light show in the back of the admin building. It's wonderful and it's going to be up for a while, so.
Thank you. Yes. So happy holidays to everybody and we will be back next Tuesday for a quick meeting, I believe. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn? Someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Meeting is adjourned. Yay.